Good evening. It is 6:33 and we're calling the December 10, 2024 Town Council Committee to Hold Meeting to Order. For roll call, all are present except for Councilor Merritt. Calendar and Communications. Council Boardland?
Thank you. I just want to thank all the residents that have reached out with their concern over Mr. Pritchard being reappointed to the Planning and Zoning. I share your concerns. Unfortunately, the name was not brought forward to the council, therefore, I was not able to vote on it. It was voted in the Personnel and Appointments with Councilor Jones, Councilor Gajewski, and Councilor Parker. And I did get those emails and all the concerns I heard loud and clear. And I stand with all the people who have concerns about reappointing somebody who has served for greater than 20 years just being not put on. So I, again, received tons of those emails, and I thank the constituents for standing up and speaking out when you feel like injustice is being not served. With that, I also just wanted to state, to clear the record as well, it was stated that I was appointed to a Property Reuse Building Committee for property, and that, you know, I was asked by the mayor, and I asked questions. I never confirmed I wanted that position. I guess that was the indication that they thought I wanted that, so that was my reason for not taking that, to be clear. Also, to triage some questions and concerns, just about how the council has been operating, the way it's been, the treatment, and I just also want to thank Fatima for coming out last week as well, with her concerns that she's obviously seeing, as well as others. Again, I still stand on no standing committee up here. I get offered, what, first offer for an ad hoc committee, but this council with this leadership has yet to put me on anything to make any decisions like Personnel and Appointments that would, you know, affect... I'm elected at large, I'm a high vote getter, and yet, out of my nine-member Democratic body, they do not feel I deserve after serving elected time for eight years on any committees. When offered a committee, I was told to be a member, not a chair, after eight years of service. So, I do feel your concerns. Thank you.
Council Pacino?
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Council Russ?
I just want to, I received a lot of emails today that I was not able to read because I got off work very late, but I will definitely review them later. And I just wanted to clarify for the record, I am on the Personnel and Appointments Committee. It is not Council Perp.
Oh, I stand corrected. Councilor Russ?
Excuse me, this is my time. Thank you.
I just want to say apologize. I didn't mean to say, it wasn't intentional.
Council Boardland, you do not have a floor.
Just apologizing, it wasn't intentional.
I understand you don't have a floor.
I can't even apologize?
You're out of order now.
Okay, thank you.
Council Russ continues. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council Boardland, can you please stop with your comments in saying "Jesus Christ"?
Aye.
This is the second time I've asked you to do the same thing. Please stop.
I ask for the same respect.
You are out of order. You don't have a floor.
Thank you. That's okay.
You're speaking out of turn.
Thank you.
Again, you don't have the floor.
Thank you.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended this past week the Season of Celebration at Thrive 55, and also, along with Councilor Parker, Gajewski, Council Russ, and also did the Trails Meeting, where we talked about changes to the Groton Cross Town Trail that being realigned and adjusted. I'd just like to make a couple of comments on the Personnel and Appointments meeting a couple of weeks ago concerning the Planning and Zoning Commission, and give a little insight into my thinking. For the last number of years, I've heard from the community as a counselor and on this committee for some fresh and new ideas around development in Groton. Residents wanting changes in their community in both housing and business development, and that has not, that has not been happening. Changes in our community start in the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have five people with about 75 years of experience. They are long-serving, dedicated, and committed, but at some point, they're all going to move on. We have a very deep and experienced bench, but we need to broaden the view with new people, revised regulations, and new ideas. We have some new people reaching out, expressing some interest in serving, but there were no openings. We don't always have new people interested. Right now, we do. I'd like to capture that. Create opportunities for new people with new ideas and energy to be involved and learn from our experienced team. I appreciate the 24 years of time and service Mr. Pritchard has given to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to Groton. He was not fired, like some have suggested, but merely his term expired. We also appreciate all the time that all ABC members give to the town, but perhaps the time has come to give someone else an opportunity to serve. This isn't about what a person has done, or what they are doing, or how they're doing their job. It's at what point is it in the public interest to create opportunities for new people with new ideas to be involved, and to transition at ABC gradually, so you don't lose all the experience and knowledge. The community has been asking for change, and it's time for change. Next week, we have a scheduled Personnel and Appointments meeting because of scheduling conflicts with an invitation from Captain Curtin at the Navy Base for a reception at the Nautilus Museum. We're going to try to find a different date for that. At the moment, we're still trying to get schedules to coincide. Okay?
Thank you. Council McRae?
Thank you. Numerous emails, mostly today, maybe 20 or 30 emails regarding, also had some phone calls and some text messages from residents regarding the manner in how the Chair, Chair Jeffrey Pritchard, was not reappointed to his position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, yesterday, attended the Groton Heights as a member of the Property Sale Review Committee, and I'm very excited to be involved in that process, so thank you, Mayor, for that appointment. Lastly, I did spend some time in our research Robert Rules of Order with regards to the committee meetings. In Chapter 16, Section 4921, it sets forth the rules regarding procedures. It states the following: "As a result," I'm sorry, "in a board meeting where there are not more than about a dozen members present, some of the formality that is necessary in a large assembly would hinder business. The rules governing such meetings are different from the rules that hold in other assemblies in the following respects." I'm just going to skip, get to Point 2, "Motions need not be seconded." As a result of this, I believe the Personnel and Appointments Committee did not properly proceed when a motion was made to reappoint Jeffrey Pritchard as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As such, I would like to request that Mayor Franco or Chair Jones schedule a Personnel Appointments meeting whereby this motion can be discussed further. Additionally, if decision is made to not have a Personnel Appointments Committee meeting to discuss Chair Pritchard's reappointment, I will be pursuing other options, such as a referral to the council, or a motion to suspend the rules at the next council meeting, to ensure that this council has the ability to review and approve, if deemed appropriate, Jeffrey Pritchard's reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe the full council should be making this decision to reappoint and not a three member of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I participated in the United Way Tommy Choy Drive at Outer Lake Brewing with Council Pacino and Council Russ. Thank you to all who's donated, for those invitation, those toys during this holiday season, for those in need. I also attended the Thrive 55 Season of Celebration event. It was a wonderful event. There was many in attendance, and it was great to see many community members. Congrats to Beverly Washington on being appointed the new Chair of the Board of Education, and Adrian Johnson is the new Vice Chair of the Board of Education. I look forward to working with you. And then, my state, as a member of the Personnel Appointments Committee, I have a statement on Mr. Pritchard. No action was taken by the Personnel and Appointments Committee. Mr. Pritchard will continue to serve as a member. As the Charter states, he will serve until a reappointment or replacement. He will remain in his role when his term expires. I appreciate his years of service and knowledge to the town. As Chair Jones mentioned in his communications, there are people who have experienced issues in applying. In order for that to happen, there technically needs to be a vacancy, so I would like to give those folks an opportunity, and compare it to Mr. Pritchard's record. I'm just keeping my options open as a town councillor.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Groton Seasons of Celebrations at Thrive 55. Thank you, Thrive 55, and all others, our sponsors, Charta Rope, Foxwoods, Groton Rotary. All the participants for the evening, it was a wonderful turnout, a lot of hard work behind the scenes to put that together, and I thank everyone for their volunteerism. And also attended the meeting last evening for our first property sale review, and it turned out very well. To some of the, yes, I received numerous emails regarding Mr. Pritchard. No, I did not read all of them, because I do work during the day. The rules, we had a rule last week to suspend the rules, to bring that forward. I do not think we can bring it back. It is within our rules, Town Council rules. If a decision has been made, it takes 12, a year to make another decision, or six councillors, and we already suspended the rules last week to discuss to move his name forward. As such, I try to be a stickler for the rules, and I'm still going to be a stickler for the rules. And that's all my communications. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Pearl Harbor Memorial held in Groton on Saturday, along with Groton Heights, actually, Holiday Open House. Actually, it's the Battle for Griswold. I also attended SEC TV's 10th Anniversary Celebration, which was really nice, with some of our legislators. I received many communications regarding the Planning and Zoning appointments as well, and, as was discussed, I also worked during the day, so I haven't been able to read them all. Though I will say, over the past week, I have had numerous people stopping me in public while I'm out shopping, while I'm at events, to discuss what they see here at the council. And I will say, it's not very positive, and what I'm hearing is they are noticing that it seems in their mind to be one particular councillor. That seems to be, and what they've been saying to me, is very embarrassing for our town.
Point of order.
And my response is that I will be...
Point of order.
Your point of order.
I don't think it's fair that you're targeting one councillor.
I didn't say who a councillor was.
I just, I mean, just in general, I just think it's inappropriate.
I don't concur. Thank you.
Okay, that's your choice.
I have to say that when people are discussing these things with me, I let them know that I'm striving to keep our meetings as productive and civil as possible, and that it's not always easy. And as I've heard this evening from one of our councillors discussing Robert's Rules of Order, I would just like to state that my interpretation of some of these items is that, to keep rules consistent and setting precedence. So if my interpretation is, if a committee always required a second, they should always require a second. You don't change the rules depending on what situation is going on, or from what I've also been told from some very wise people, is that if there isn't a second, that means there's really, there's no support to go forward with the conversation. So you very well should move on. And with that, we will go on to our next item, which is approval of minutes. 2024-1081 Minutes. Council Parker, would you like to take that?
I make a motion to approve the committee, the whole meeting minutes of November 26, 2004. I still move.
Second?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones. Does anybody have any changes that they would like to see in the minutes? Any issues?
Oh.
Council Russ?
I just have a quick typo on page 11. Third paragraph, Council Gajewski, and then it says "she," so it's just a typo.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Third paragraph, Council Gajewski.
Third paragraph?
Yeah. Second line, should be "he," and so is "she." Just a typo.
Thank you. Council Gajewski?
I have another typo. It was by, not, I thank you, Council Russ, for catching that. I count it on Council Jones. It should be "he," not "she."
And what page?
That's on Council Packet, page 11, Minutes, page 9. Oh, I guess I'm in there too. Council Jones?
Which paragraph?
I might, it might be the same one. I saw Council Jones' name too. Okay. All right. Yep, that's it.
All right.
Council Boardland?
Section 5F, the ABC's Training Requirements, or maybe, I'm just trying to see. I had something I think it's fine. Actually, it's minor. We can stay.
Thank you. And just to reiterate what our previous town clerk used to say, minor typos or small corrections are not actually necessary. It's usually substance or votes. So with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Council Boardland, I didn't hear your vote?
I'm fine with it.
Thank you. That's 8 to 0 to 0. All right, we're on to new business. 2024-984-2, Annual Meeting with Legislators. This is on page 13 of our packet. We have our legislators here. Would you like to come up to the table so we can have a nice discussion, please?
(inaudible) two of us can be together instead of one being on the side. Is it okay that I move to Chair?
Absolutely fine. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for coming. Would you like to introduce yourself for the people at home?
Chris Conley. I represent the 40th District, which is Groton and New London. Usually, we say what committees we're on, but committees have not been announced yet. I'm sure they'll be coming up, and then, well, they'll be coming up before January 8, hopefully in the next couple of days. No, House members don't have our committees. So the House and Senate leaders announce them appropriately. Senator Summers does have hers, so we, I, we will be on, Andre and I will be on at least two, or maybe three committees. There are 151 members in the House. We have 102 Democrats, so the Speaker is still moving folks to where they are going to be, and we'll know shortly. But we're looking forward to another fun time. This is my fifth year as a state representative.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be with you all. A little different being on this side, and many memorable occasions spent on, on the other side of the pond, so to speak. But it's always a pleasure to be in the People's Chamber here in Groton. Andre Baumgartner, your State Representative for the 41st House District, which encompasses Groton, Mystic, and Stonington. As Chris mentioned, our Speaker has shared, is starting to make appointments to key committees with respect to Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee, Committees as well. So stay tuned for that announcement. But again, great to be with you all, and look forward to the conversation.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Heather Summers. I'm the Senator from the 18th District. I have the honor of representing eight towns in southeastern Connecticut. I don't need to name them all. Groton, Plainfield, along the Rhode Island border. We do have our committee assignments. I have been named the Deputy Leader Pro Tem of the Senate, and we have, I will be doing, being the ranking member on Appropriations, which is the budget. I will be ranking member of Public Health. I will be on Education. I will be on Commerce. I will be on Appointments and Nominations. I will be the co-chair of the Tourism Caucus, the co-chair of the Mental Health Caucus, and possibly on Labor. So it's going to be a busy, busy season for us. Yes. So I will not be attending multiple Town Council meetings because we will have zero time, so. But you will have two people from southeastern Connecticut, myself and Kathy Austin, working on the budget, so it should be hopefully helpful for southeastern Connecticut, or eastern Connecticut.
Thank you. So let me explain what our council did, if you weren't watching. We had some items that were brought forward for, like, potential CIPs within our community that would typically be paid for by taxpayer dollars. So we brought those forward. We took a consensus by the council on which one would be a priority, with a rank by votes. We brought forward our top three, because as a council, we decided three would be appropriate and number to bring forward. They are listed in our packet, and we can go over them in a moment. We also went over legislative priorities, where it was open to anything that was on the list that was sort of given to us. We could, you know, vote on and say if they were important to us. We added things to our list that we found important to us, and then we voted on all of them. If the items received more than five votes, they made it to this list. This list is not to ask you to write a bill for all of them, or to basically go out and, you know, fight for every single thing on here, because I'm not exactly sure what the priorities are going to be in your upcoming session. But these are things that, when things do come up, you know that Groton Town Council has voted, and we are in favor of these, so you would have basically the backing of Groton behind you to say, these are things that my constituents and our towns would like. There is one correction on the legislative priorities, if you do have that in front of you. There was a state fund cleanup of Mystic Education Center listed on our, on our list. It's the fourth one down. That did not receive the required votes, and I believe it was an error that it became, it became on our list. So I'm going to be crossing that one off, so. But all of the items that there received over five votes. So I'll start off with the State Bond Commission Fund request items. The first one is a Public Works item for Main Street of Noank, a reconstruction, and that is, we're thinking about $2.8 million. We have on there for education, the Northeast Academy Air Quality for $3.9 million. And we have education for the Katherine Kolonowski Air Quality as well, for $4.1 million. I do believe there is other school issues with HVACs on their way, and I'm thinking they're going to be, from the calculations I've done, probably well over, probably $15 million on those.
Two to 14.
Do you need copies?
Do you keep it in the middle?
We can share.
Do we have any backup paper copies, Mr. Burt?
We can share. We do it all the time.
Mr. Burt does have backup copies. So those are our top three priorities. And then, as legislative priorities, just so the community can hear as well as you, I'm, I'm going to read them. Heating assistance.
Thanks, Sean.
Allowing illegal notices to be posted online rather than printed. Support increase for Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rates. Increase funding for mass transit, including seat bus routes. Support for funding for TVCCA's proposed facility. Funding for veteran services. Funding for school meals for all programs. State funding for rental and housing assistance. Reestablish fund for the state's school HVAC system reimbursement, for reimbursement grants through the Department of Administrative Services. Increase the current level of state funding for special education by lowering the threshold for reimbursement to, and to modify the minimum budget requirements related to special education costs, so that expenditures above base student costs are not included in the calculations for MBR. Either allow municipalities to capture a percentage of local sales tax from the state, or enable municipalities to add their own sales tax. Review the funding for the state pilot's program to increase the reimbursement to local municipalities for lost property taxes on state properties. Increase reimbursement of election cost. Support the expansion of the Shoreline and East Train Line, including a stop in Groton. State subsidies for development of properties by building new housing. State funding to pay for removal of sources of lead and water in homes. And finally, is invite our state legislators to attend more council meetings, because we would like updates, especially considering federal changes are anticipated, and how they will affect our state and our local government. So we'd like to see you more often with updates, if that's possible. So I would like to open it up to you for your input on our priorities, and then we will have council comments as well. Thank you.
Well, I will start with the budget. So the budget is going to be very difficult this year. We are, we do have a, a nice rainy day fund, but if the projections, we will, that's not going to last forever. And we are running out of, the ARPA dollars will all dry up by the end of the year. So it's going to be a reset of the budget. So a lot of the things that were offered previously, you may not see again. One of them in particular, which is, I know I've talked to Andre about this, is the air quality for the HVAC systems. There was two opportunities for the town to apply for grants. My, all my other towns have gotten them. The funding has now dried up. There's still about $150 million left that we are able, that the Bonding Commission can, if they decided to bond, but I don't see that happening for air quality. And that puts us in a difficult position to go ask for money here of close to, what do you have, $7 million?
Eight point one.
Plus more coming online, when there was two grant opportunities that were, I'm not saying it's to you all, I'm just saying, overall, it's hard to go back to ask when there was dollars available. There was actually so many excess dollars that OPM pulls them back. So, and I know you missed the deadline. So that, it puts us in a difficult position to ask for that. We can ask for it, but it's just going to be an even harder ask. Do you agree?
Yeah, and certainly don't want to engage in any form of Hatfields versus McCoy's conversation. You know, we certainly admire our, the work that our schools do, in particular, partnership that we have with our Board, Board of Education and Central Office. But with that said, it's not, never lost on me, working with the town in particular, especially our town manager. We've all been the beneficiaries of this, but historically, when we've sent grant opportunities to the town manager, the town manager responds very quickly, and, and so, long short of it, I think it would just behoove the town, when there's significant grant opportunities to apply, there's, it does not hurt to simply apply. The worst that can happen is that you get rejected. But of course, the beauty of programs like the, the air quality grant, which was supposed to have a round three, that has been paused, as Senator has stated, it doesn't hurt to apply, and should the town get projected, there's always that opportunity to remediate any issues in the future, to consider for future rounds. You know, case in point now, we're in round six of CIF, and there are many nonprofits who have, or municipalities that have applied for CIF grants. Round, you know, one, two, or three, maybe not gotten it, but every time, their application process, application has improved, and finally, after round four or five, they have been approved. So, you know, at the end of the day, air quality is just something we should not ever negotiate on. You know, it's absolutely critically important that our youngsters and our kiddos are breathing clean, clean and healthy air. And so, I have no doubt that this is something that can be remediated in the future, but it certainly will be a tall ask to apply for funds through the regular Bond Commission process when there is a tailor-made grant program for those specific purposes.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the grant program. Again, it was disappointing that the first two rounds were not taken advantage of by Groton. There is currently money in there, and there is discussion about moving the program where it's currently with DAS to school construction grant program. So I don't want to act as if there will never be money, or there will never be another round. I do think there will be another round through school construction. So it's an opportunity, since the grant was not applied for in the first two rounds, maybe to start to get that paperwork ready, or to get ready to go, so that way, when that decision's made, hopefully this session, to open it up through school construction, instead of being, you know, I wouldn't say behind the eight ball, but instead of waiting for the program to be open, you could be ready to go. You have done school construction grant before, so you know the outline of the paperwork. While you don't know exactly the language or the documents needed, you know, you know, kind of the outline of the paperwork, and you can start with your first draft as soon as possible for that. I would highly recommend getting ready to go, because that's where I anticipate the 100, this portion of the 150 million that will be used, it won't be the whole thing, because the budget's going to be very different. But that's where I anticipate the portion of that money being allocated through school construction grants. I could be wrong, but that's just my projection if I was betting. I would share, you know, with a federal change like we have, we are anticipating some big changes in budget that I'm not excited about, and I'm sure many of you aren't excited about. When the Trump administration left last time, and myself and Senator Summers were here, talking about things that we knew the Biden administration was going to do more with transportation, because that's what they had campaigned upon, and we said, get some transportation projects ready. We're going to be able to, you know, get the Gold Star Bridge, and a lot of our highway projects moving, which is what you folks have seen on the highways over the last few years, on, because we knew what the federal, what people did federally. years on, because we knew what the, what people did federally. I would say, let's go back to what we know happened in 16 and 17, when 17 happened. I know some of you were counselors, but some of you were not. Some of you might not have even been living in Groton and weren't paying attention to how that affected the municipalities. What happened in 17 budget is the state lost a lot of federal money for things that we depend on. So I would say, you know, we expect people to do the same thing. And that means, you know, we're preparing in the state and we'd like to be wrong, but we're preparing for a cut in fuel oil money for residents because that's what they did the first time. We're preparing for a cut in special education funding because that's what they did the first time. We're preparing for a cut in money for rental assistance and in money for state-funded Medicaid. We do have a rainy day, good news is unlike in 17 budget cycle, we do now have a healthy rainy day fund. So we do have state dollars that we can utilize for those budget cuts, assuming it will happen again, just like it happened in 2017. And we do have money that with agreement between the House, Senate, and Governor's office, we can transfer to those accounts if that indeed happens again. That money will not last through four years in the same rate that we're paying for all these programs. So I do want to be mindful with some of your lists are, a lot of your list is increase in funding. And by a lot, like all of it, is increase in funding. If we get through, if these cuts happen on, again, if the state gets less federal money, it means the municipalities get less state money. The money just rolls downhill. So if we end up with a zero growth, zero gain, that might be really good between the first projection and the end result. The governor has asked departments to present 5% reductions across the board, just so we can see what those numbers and what those changes in services will look like. Again, it doesn't mean that will be the end result for anything, but it is preparing and getting ready. And for folks who may be new to the budget cycle, we've been around for a while. You think maybe I should get on appropriations committee? You'll put me on, you'll have me in. For folks, for folks around on, for our state budget. So it does start with the governor making a budget address and that is very similar, I would say almost more similar to your department heads making budget proposals to your town manager. So the governor makes a proposal. Again, all of our department heads meet with the governor's office and make proposals, but the governor makes a proposal around the second week or third week of January, I think I'm right. And that's when we get a book, we get it after he starts speaking. We all kind of do Ctrl F and look for things very quickly and try to be polite during the speech. Then the appropriations committee deals with department by department. Everyone gets a public hearing. So if something comes out in the budget that you dislike and that we dislike, something will be disliked by each of us, maybe even different things or the same thing. Public hearings happen. Appropriations committee will vote out a budget. That's very similar to council voting out a budget. Appropriations by part, hopefully bipartisanly, but House and Senate members, Democrats and Republicans will vote out a budget. Then the leadership of the caucuses takes over and multiple budgets are presented to the caucuses. Maybe one, if we all, some of us remember back in 2017, we didn't get a budget until November. So I would say there were about, you know, 100 different proposals that came out through the caucuses. And then the House and Senate votes on a budget. If the governor signs it, wonderful. If the governor vetoes, it's two thirds to override. Eventually, we will get a budget, but I do know when you're starting your budget preparations in February, we will not have any idea what the end number is for you. And because I think the governor's preparing for cuts based on what happened in 2017, you know, if those don't happen, his early budget might be, you know, might need adjustments that are good or might need adjustments that are less. So you're, this year for budget, you are going to have to kind of go with us a little with the flow and we will not know your municipal aid numbers during your budget process. So my advice would be do not plan for receiving more money. Plan for zero. And if you have a little extra in your reserve fund, that might be, you know, great because some of these grants might be changing or some of these grants might be held. I did hear that you guys are interested in hiring a grant writer soon and I'm very excited about that and I hope that happens quickly. And we look forward to someone joining the town hopefully with that. I understand that was talked about in budget negotiations and hopefully that will get moved through. Applying for state and federal grants will be very important as the budget is a little in flux right now. So remember, every dollar you get from another source is another dollar you can utilize and not use around because I know you'll be doing, negotiating a budget when you don't know your state dollars and that's very difficult. But we are around. If you can't get all three of us on a Tuesday afternoon, once we get into session, it's okay. Please reach out. I know other towns, I only represent one other town, but the mayor gets us on a Zoom, gets us on the phone. When we did have budget problems in Groton in 17, we were on the phone with the prior town manager, with your superintendent. We were calling them at two or three in the morning, sorry, John, as we got budget numbers that were coming out so folks could plan. And we're available for you, even if physically we're in Hartford Mall, we're still available for you as you need us.
So if I can just interject for one second, I just want to say the total amount that we have left to budget for the entire state of Connecticut to bond is $150 million. I do not see that going all to the HVAC grant system. I do think that there is a push and this is something that's a priority for appropriations to try to push that into school construction, but it'll be the ratio that you are used to for your school construction project. It's probably not going to be a, you know, a full grant. So one thing I think that would be helpful is depending on how many schools you need this for, is just to have your total package ready to go rather than piecemealing it. Because if you are going to be taking advantage of the grant, depending on where you are in your reserve, you may have to have a referendum to be able to bond your portion of it. So it's obviously cheaper to bond it all at once than it is to piecemeal it. So I would get a total package from the Board of Ed as to what you're looking at financially, if that makes sense, so you're ready to go. And then you can decide if that's what you want to do or not. Just on a note here, we don't know what's going to come out of Washington. You know, we're all sort of guessing. Nobody has really an idea of what the plan is. And it's important to recognize, right now, the state is looking at budget, what was budgeted versus what we're seeing. And just to give you an example, with the current money that we have set aside for Medicaid, which is, you know, part of it's from the federal government, part of it's what, that the state kicks in, we are about $231 million over budget. There is more people on Medicaid in the state of Connecticut and they are more compromised and have more ailments and need more medical care. So that's just currently. And so you're going to see that number grow. I know that you had talked about supporting the increase in state Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rates. That's something that is requested every session. There is a group that is going to be coming out shortly. They've studied all the Medicaid rates to see where we are in comparison to other towns and, I'm sorry, other states. And we are woefully low compared to other states. And that's a problem with ambulance providers, with any kind of provider, whether it's a doctor, you know, a psychiatrist, et cetera. So there definitely has to be something done, but it's extremely costly. It's the biggest, one of the biggest portions of our budget is Medicaid. So I just wanted to point those two things out for you. And, you know, funding for school meals for all programs, that's about a $65 million.
Ninety million.
Ninety million. It was 65 last year, it's $90 million. That's a significant ask for the legislature to come up with. So I just wanted to touch, I didn't see on here, you have something about like, oh, maybe it's on the other page. State funding to pay for the removal of sources of lead in the water. There's a new federal program that's just kicking off. Federal funding for lead pipes. State funding for lead in your house. If you have children in the house under a certain age and you own the house, you can apply through the Department of Public Health for a grant to remediate the lead. If you don't own the house, you can put in a request and DPH will reach out to the owner of the establishment that you're renting and they have an ability there. That program is just kicking off now, so there is money available for lead in the homes. And that was specifically designed, that came out of public health when we lowered the lead, the amount of lead that could be considered acceptable, even though, no lead's really acceptable, we lowered the limit. So that is a funding source that is just coming online. Let's see. I do have a bill in concerning allowing municipalities, it went in yesterday, to be able, if they want, to add a, I didn't call it a sales tax because I put mine in specifically, I have a couple of different bills that are similar to what you want, but let's just take Groton for example, or Stonington. It would give you the ability, if you wanted, to add an additional tax to a hotel, a venue, or a restaurant. You could set the rate, it would be up to 1%, that that money would then come back to the town, but it would be specifically to be used to offset the impacts of tourism in your town. So it could be used for roads, it could be used for sewer expansion, it could be used for, you know, the cost associated with police for certain events, to try to give municipalities another way to raise, you know, revenue that you can be used to help offset some of the impacts of tourism. So that's one particular bill. And then I do have another reverse that the COG had asked me to put in, which I don't think is a good idea, but I'm going to put it in anyway, which is to dedicate a certain percentage of the sales tax to come back to the municipalities in which the service was purchased. But we know what happens when the state takes the money, they never return it proportionately. So I would, I prefer the other one. I think it's better for you that you would be able to do that should you choose. If you choose not to, it would have to be obviously a vote of the council and you could set the amount too. So I do have similar bills into that, which is what you've kind of requested on the sales tax thing. I think I would like you to be a little bit more specific on state funding to support the development of properties by building new housing. I'm not really sure what you mean by that. If you could talk about that a little bit. I think all of us are going to support the TVCCA proposed facility. We did in the past. I know they didn't get what they wanted, but again, you know, there's different mechanisms to be able to obtain money. I know one of my towns that I represent, I think, got the second largest CIF grant, which is something that I think you guys should try to take advantage of as much as you possibly can. The, let's see, what else do you have on here? Funding for veteran services. I'm assuming that you mean to hire somebody to work for your Veterans Affairs person in Groton. Many towns are sharing someone. I have not seen grant funding for that particular request as of yet. That's something that we can look to see if there is any kind of available funding from the veterans' budget. Let's see, funding for rental, I wanted to touch on the, you had something in here about heating assistance. Just so you know, last year, the heating assistance was cut by the federal government. They reduced the amount. And we had an opportunity in the legislature to make up that difference because we had enough ARPA money that we could have brought it up to where it should have been. And we were very concerned about that in this particular year because we don't know what kind of winter we're going to have and the cost of fuel has risen. But that was rejected and we could not get that out. So the majority of the people on, it was appropriations at that point, voted no on that. That was something that I know my particular caucus really pushed hard for. So, you know, if we're concerned about that supplement, that we had an opportunity, I'm just letting you know, the legislature said no, they were not going to make up the difference. It was going to be just what we were, we had in our budget, we weren't going to make up the difference that we lost from the federal government. So again, we don't know where that's going to end up with a new administration or what that's going to look like. And then we have here.
I know this council has no shortage of questions and it may be appropriate to go get into that. Just quickly, one thing on this list, increase funding for mass transit to increase the coverage of seat bus routes. Just want to put in a plug for an existing pilot program, the microtransit program that has, I think, provided a lot of mobility to folks who don't own a personal motor vehicle, who live in, say, Noank or Mystic, to get, to be able to go grocery shopping, for example, to get their pharmaceuticals. So that's really, really important to, I think, for our community to continue that micro mobility program, again, pilot funded. So there will be an expiration date. So to the extent that the council can support that initiative in the future, would be certainly advantageous to our constituents, collective constituency. As far as Senator Summers had brought up, the local sales tax option, it's something that we have heard ad nauseam over the last few, at least in the last few years, especially representing Stonington. The first elect in Stonington, Daniel Cheeseborough, produced a comprehensive report, happy to share it with the town manager, that goes over really how much our communities, considering we are tourist, our economies are heavily rooted in the tourist economy, how, we're essentially a donor community, right? So we're sending more, far more sales tax receipts, revenues. Yes. And, you know, if we were to look at Mystic as a whole, sending a lot more, again, receipts up to Hartford than we're getting back in terms of revenue. So finding some parity would be advantageous, you know, whether that is, again, ensuring that those dollars go directly back to the communities for covering the cost of tourism. But again, I know you have a lot of questions and I'm happy to get into a little bit more detail about some of those proposals.
I just wanted to briefly add about the lead program, which is a great new program. New London and Norwich have already started to take advantage of that. So if you're filling out the paperwork and, you know, new programs paperwork can get interesting or difficult or challenging, please, to the town manager, New London and Norwich might be one or two steps ahead of you. So utilize their knowledge to help if you have any issues with the paperwork on that new program.
And that is open to individual homeowners too. It's not just towns, just so. There's lead pipes, that's federal, and then the other one is, so individual homeowners or tenants can actually try to apply for that. Just want to touch on special education, just so you know, there is a group that is forming that is going to look at how Connecticut funds its special education. I know that some of us on appropriations will be on that. And there is a big push for many that are included in this to fully fund special education in the state of Connecticut. It would be a game changer for all towns if it was fully funded appropriately. So I'm just letting you know, that's one thing, but this is an interesting idea that we have here, so.
It's a new policy committee, very exciting new committee on special education. I think we're all, we're all excited about it and hopefully there'll be some good results from it.
Let's start off with some questions. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Representative Bumgarner, Representative Conley, Senator Summers, for coming this evening. I'm going to go with my three big things that I really want to emphasize that they were in there. School meals for children, I would implore you to do that. I think it is wonderful, a wonderful idea and it would really alleviate some burdens on some families. Continue the pension debt payments. I saw that right now, the estimate is that the pension debt will be paid down roughly in 2048 and I don't want that to stop, so I do really want to see that continue. And then this is kind of like my dream with Shoreline East. I would love to have a Shoreline East station right in Groton, right by EB, to get a lot of the commuters off of the roads that are coming into our great town. And it's also good for the environment, so there's an added plus on that. I do have a question for each of you. I'm going to start with Representative Bumgarner. I know you've done some work on short-term rentals. What is your kind of ideas with that? And I know it's definitely changed because there was a recent court case between the last time legislators were in session, so if you could expand on that, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. One of my favorite questions, appreciate it. So short-term rentals, actually, I would argue my interests stemmed from sitting on this legislative body. As you all know, over the years, many residents have come forward to us concerned about the proliferation of short-term rentals in residential communities. Obviously, short-term rentals, it's not a new concept, but the notion of VRBO, Airbnb, right? Online applications that you can use just to, you know, anywhere, go anywhere in the world and stay for a short period of time. So there are no shortage of remedies to addressing that proliferation. I'm someone who believes I'm someone who believes that every municipality and political subdivision should be able to regulate as they see fit, how they see, how they believe is best for their communities. So case in point, Noank, for example, which is a political subdivision or community fire district, they have independent zoning authority. They decided that they, as a community, through zoning, to ban short-term rentals. I fundamentally believe that is their communities, right, to do that. On the other hand, Groton, for example, the Planning and Zoning Commission recently, through their zoning regs, not only grandfathered the existing short-term rentals in, but for certain neighborhoods, set parameters as far as what kind of short-term rentals can exist within those respective communities. So it's not outlawed, it's not a ban, it is just, again, more stringent regulations on how they operate. So again, every municipality can treat them differently, they should treat them differently, in my opinion, and just my opinion, but Hartford should not be in the position of dictating what municipalities can or cannot do. The one recurring theme I've heard, though, irrespective of what neighborhood I've spoken with, whether it's in Noank or Mystic, or on the other side of the river in Stonington, is that the municipalities do not have a handle of how many short-term rentals exist within the communities. So I know in Groton, in the past, when we discussed working on a short-term rental ordinance, that had come up, you know, through ordinance, creating a registry. The problem is, how can you verify, how can you verify on that registry who actually, you know, whether or not folks own it, own the residency, or, you know, or, you know, information about the finances? So I think that, again, the best way to remedy that issue is utilizing our Department of Revenue Services, for example, that already collects taxes from short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are required to pay a 15% tax already, a lodging tax, to the state of Connecticut. And the state obviously collects those funds, some of those funds go to the Tourism Fund or other purposes. But I do believe that could actually be the best way for the state to collect, to collect that information and actually launch a registry of their own, a registry that the municipalities can use, a registry that residents and municipalities and police departments alike could utilize to know where short-term rentals exist within their communities. And I think that would be, obviously, save an enormous expense to the municipality for operating such a registry. So I, that's something I very much would love to explore, has a more of a finance angle, in large part because that registry would be operated by the Department of Revenue Services. This is already done in New York, this is already done in Massachusetts. Another unique thing about Massachusetts, for example, is that they allow municipalities to collect a supplemental tax on short-term rentals that can cover the costs of, you know, the enforcement regulation that goes with being a tourist community. So that's also something to keep in mind as well, you know, in large part because, again, it is an expense on our municipality. No shortage of stories we heard on the council, police departments having, you know, to go to homes where parties, some parties got a little too rowdy, and that does degrade the quality of life for our neighborhoods. So again, something to explore, again, kind of two pieces. The online registry piece, ran by the Department of Revenue Services, and also exploring the concept for municipalities to collect revenue. Again, municipalities, similar to, with cannabis, the state could collect that tax, just like we do with the lodging tax, and then directly remit it back to the municipality to save, again, the frustration or the headache of, you know, for our friends over at the finance office and tax office as well, so.
Thank you, Representative Bumgarner. Representative, I'll stay in the House. Representative Conley, I know you've had some leadership posts in the past. We, during our discussion with what finances we were discussing and bringing you, we just looked at the, I know this isn't in your district, but we discussed the Groton Long Point Bridge. And there was discussion about getting a waiver for our 10% fee, and we decided, I shouldn't say we decided, there was a consensus of the council not to proceed giving that to you as a list of an item. I wanted to know what your experience on applying with things for multiple things. Do legisl, do agencies communicate with each other when somebody's applied for one, and then they say, oh, they can get it with that agency? Does it kind of hurt us? I kind of want a little update on strategy.
Good question. I think this year bonding would not, I think your strategy is correct for this year bonding dollars, not to apply for the money for that bridge, because you're looking for, you're still looking for DOT to not, to take back the 10%. So I think you did make a good strategy decision. But do, I think that's why it's really important that you copy us on documents. So you're working with DOT right now, and I know the town manager has been keeping us updated on when he's requesting updates and is waiting to hear back. It's important to let us know so that we can talk to, because remember, the DOT commissioner is appointed by the governor and does work for the governor. So if we hear that there's troubles, we can reach up to higher levels and have more conversations. We can't always promise that everything will go 100% the way that we wish, but the more we know, the more it's helpful. So if you have asked the DOT for an update, it's important that we're copied on that. If you get an update and we're not copied on it, it's important, you follow, you copy all of us and say, here's the update. If you get something and you're like, we're not sure what to do next, let's talk. You don't have to bring us in for a council meeting. We can do a conference call, we can do a Zoom, we can come to your office, we can talk about things as to how to get updates. It's important, it might be appropriate to have folks come up to Hartford to talk about things, to have the town manager come up and talk to a variety of folks. But do they, on their own, talk? Do the different departments on their own talk? Sometimes they do. Oftentimes, they're all at the same meetings, but I wouldn't expect others to do the legwork. We're here to help, but if you don't tell us what you're doing, we often can't help. I've sat on transportation for eight years now, so I've had good communications with transportation and their staff and their folks, but there's always things that come up, and letting us know, don't think we know, let us know, hey, we've got a problem with this, or hey, we're concerned about that, and, you know, can you help us with a solution? We're your partners in these things. So do include us, and again, do include us on every single state grant application. I know we've said this a few times before your group, but if you've applied for a state grant, we should be included. My staff person, I know I've talked, Ariana's great, Ariana just got a promotion and will not be my staff person as of Monday. She's wonderful, but I'm going to miss her. But our staff folks are wonderful, and they write letters of support for grants for my other town on a regular basis. I am not often asked to sign on to a grant for the town of Groton. And we're here for you, we'd like to do it. We'd like to follow up with those departments on grant applications that you've applied for, that you're still waiting to hear back. And you never know who's in a meeting with whom. We could be, you know, at the cafeteria getting our lunch, and next to us is the DOT commissioner. We didn't have a set-up meeting, but we're standing, we're waiting, we're getting our lunch together. You could be out and about, and someone else could be headed into a meeting that we happen to be in a committee with, says, oh, I've got a meeting with DOT commissioner. We could be like, hey, I've got this problem over here in Groton, you know, let's, can I come in with you, or can you bring it up? Things happen quite, some things happen planned, and some things happen organically, which is why it's so important that you do keep us in the loop with these problems. And it's important that we know your number one, two, and three priority. It doesn't mean your other priorities aren't very, very important, we also need to know those because we can help out with those. But if your number one priority for this year is the Groton Long Point Bridge, even though it's not in my district, I want to know about it, because I represent your town. So don't just speak to, you know, Andre about his half, or me about my half, please speak to all of us.
Thank you.
And then my question for Senator Summers, she actually kind of touched on it a little bit. You mentioned the CIF program. I know Groton has not applied to that. Could you expand on that? Like, what makes us?
He did apply.
Oh, sorry. My apologies, Manager Burton, I am so sorry. Kind of expand on what you see in CIF, what benefit we could use, what would increase our chance of getting a CIF grant? Just kind of something, and hopefully our new grants coordinator, when they do come in, watching this and can kind of take a little bit of knowledge from what you have on it.
Yes, well, I know you have applied, applying again. There are, I'm trying to think, let me think, one, two, three. I think four of my eight towns have gotten significant CIF grant funds. I know Griswold got a $9.7 million fund, CIF, last year for infrastructure. The key is, they want to see that it's going to enhance economic development, that was the focus last year. So they had, they were able to get it, they had a first round and a second round. The second round was $9.7 million to expand sewer and water access for a large area where they're going to plan housing. So that helps both the developer and the town be able to expand and help their economic base. There was some commercial in there also. So I think making sure that, you know, there's an economic benefit, most of the, all of the towns, I'm trying to think if I'm speaking correctly, that have gotten awarded a CIF. It was either part of a project that was for economic development, like maybe the tail end to finish it up, or something that was going to, you know, really help increase the town's grant list. I have not seen CIF for other types of projects in my, my particular area. CIF is something that is open to particular communities to apply to, and they're, you know, I think we're on our fifth round now of CIF, and people put it in, they apply, but they are pretty careful in trying to be fair, actually, all of my towns I'm thinking, except for Groton got one, and Stonington. Giving towns that have not received other types of funding, sort of priority over other towns, you know, a lot of our cities tend to get a lot of grants, you know, a lot of funding. In this particular situation, the towns have applied, and they try to make it more equitable by giving each town something. At least, that's what I saw. And CIF is complicated, you put it in, you put in your application, but the bottom line is, at the end of the day, each caucus gets a certain amount of money, and they're like, what are your projects? What are you doing? You know, if these are your CIF projects, what's the priority? And then we have to advocate for them. So I can't tell you how important it is, and I'm going to reiterate what Representative Conley had said. Just today, I was asked to sign on to three different letters for different projects that are in the works. I rarely, if ever, get one from Groton. It could be your Parks and Rec applying for a grant for whatever, camp in the summer, I'm making that up. If we're not writing letters in support, and we're not calling saying, I'm advocating, you're going to drop, because other towns are doing that. So if we don't know, there's no, we're not mind readers, we have to know what you're doing, not that we want to micromanage, but just copy us, saying, I'm submitting this CIF application, or this grant application, this urban grant, this steep grant, whatever the grant is, this grant's for DEEP, can you support it? We will all write letters. Sometimes we can get people, I get people asking me from other towns to support their stuff, you know, because we can then advocate for that. So that's really, really important. And just, just let us know, and we will do it, and it's automatic. Then we know it's sort of in the queue, and then we can talk to whoever's in charge of that grant program when we see them, or we're meeting with them, and a lot of people have to come see us in appropriations because they all need their budget. So that's a good time for me to say, hey, Groton's got a grant and DOT for blah, 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 blah. What do you think you can help us out with? So it's important that we know what you guys are doing. The CIF is a great program, I think you guys should keep applying and applying and applying and applying. But make it a good ask, so that it's, you know, something that we can really.
New London's got multiple projects, and I've had my colleagues in the House say, well, only one of your towns has applied, can you call and advocate?
That's weird.
Can you advocate for my project, too, because my, your other town didn't apply? Sure, I can advocate.
Right.
For your town, too, because I've advocated for, for these three projects, and now I have some open space, and there's, you know, if we get, if we get 10 House members asking for this, it's more likely to get passed, to get, get higher up on the list.
And I would suggest, if you have a big project, to ask for the big project, because some towns, I don't want to say who they are in my district, they applied for one, they got a majority of it, but they didn't apply for all of it, now they want another CIF. But the problem is, when they're looking at fairness, they're saying, well, we just gave this town a million points, too. We really need to look at other towns to see what we can give to them. So make your ask all-inclusive for whatever it is that you need.
And it is a new, a unique program, again, or just in round six, there will be several more rounds in the future, but Stonington, for example, is not eligible for CIF. They're not a distressed municipality or an alliance district, and Groton obviously meets both of those criteria. So with that said, you're also competing with, you know, other communities that are larger, right, larger urban municipalities with even larger delegations. But again, just as long as we're communicating, as both my colleagues have, you know, have stated, we have no qualms supporting those asks and fighting, and having the conversations we need to have with our leadership and the respective parties.
Thank you.
Just want to say my apologies, Manager Burton, that I did not know that we had applied once before. All right. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, you had something?
Yes, I wanted to add, and we did apply for cleanup funds at Pleasant Valley, Groton Heights. Right around that same time, we received around $8 million for the Challenge Grant, which may have diverted, that, you know, may have been where we ended up getting funded. And the more construction details you have, the better chance you have of CIF. We're actually gearing up, I think there's one deadline coming up any time now. We're going to apply for the next round after that, we have two things we're looking at, but we're going to need some money for some engineering costs to do that, so, I'm one of them. So it is in progress.
And folks are also willing to come down and look at the projects, talk to the town, so if you're thinking about applying again, I know between now and Friday, a lot of groups are getting their letters in, but next week, on how to set up meetings for our bonding chairs and for folks on CIF to come down and look at your projects, answer your questions, once you've figured out what you want to do, you can start doing that work before your application's in, and you can make your application stronger.
I'll be talking to you.
And just so everyone's clear, when you put in a bonding request, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bill. People think you have to, we have to put in the bonding bill. You can put in a bonding bill, and it goes to finance and it dies, but it, and it's not in the queue, but we each have an ability to put in bonding requests through our caucuses, too. So if you don't see a bill, it doesn't mean.
And have been successful doing so.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that you're not going to be a recipient of bonding dollars. The governor doesn't like bonding. He's trying to, you know, keep bonding at a certain limit, it's just the way it is, so we have to work within those constraints. But there are multiple pathways to try to get something bonded, so just, just so you know, if you don't have your agenda item for what you want bonded, or what you're interested in, it doesn't mean it can't go in after the bills do. Okay. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the, through the mayor, thank you legislators for coming to Groton. I would put my support for our veteran services, we have 3,000-plus veterans, we are presenting our veteran services option for veteran services rep at the, right at the first of the year. We have one of the largest groups of veterans, New London County has the largest group in Connecticut, and Groton certainly has a lot, so I would just encourage support for money of whatever you have to help pay for that person. So you'll be hearing more about it as we present it, but it's coming up shortly. I have just a general question, maybe Senator Summers can answer this, or maybe not. Just with all the changes, which we have no idea what's going to happen at the federal level, Department of Education, could you just explain a little bit what the Connecticut Department of Education does, and how it supports towns, and what it, does money come from the federal, does it come from the state? Just sort of give the quick Cliff Notes version of what we have.
Sure. The Cliff Notes version is that, if you're asking what the State Department of Education does, I question that on a daily basis sometimes, because I see them with a lot of mandates and a lot of requirements for our teachers, that's so weird, that echo, whatever that is. But, you know, sometimes I feel that, this is just me personally, I've seen it with my different towns, you know, like the Right to Read program, that they just put out and say, pick these five, when other towns are, you know, have their other reading programs that they are working just fine with, but the state just makes this decision, sort of, and I hear this from superintendents, just sort of in isolation in a silo, without really consulting the people that are the educators. So that is frustrating. If you're talking about federal, we get federal dollars, and then we get state dollars for education that come together. So, you know, in all intents and purposes, there's the federal, obviously, Department of Education, but the state doesn't, you know, we have to follow some things for federal funding, but the state really can set its own educational requirements here in the state of Connecticut. I'm not sure if that answers your question, I mean, we just don't know.
So they're asking about the money that the town.
So they're asking about the, the money that the town gets. We get, I think it's around $25 million that comes from.
Twenty seven, right.
ECS money. Does that come through that department or does it come from someplace else?
No, that's, that comes, that comes out of what we call our education cost sharing formula at the state of Connecticut. And I will tell you, the only reason Groton gets $27 million is because of the people sitting at this table for the past 10 years. I'll say that. Because when Malloy was the governor, he wanted to cut our budget by $18 million. Because if you look at the, the data and how, you know, the formula is created, that, that, that would be a cut to Groton if you look at how it is. And you, you fell into becoming an alliance district because of truancy issues in one particular school, and that was an, an ability for us to keep you at that $25 million.
Twenty seven.
There is not a recognition, well, it was 25 then, it's 27 now. Every little billion counts, I know. But there, there's not really the recognition. I put the bill in every single year. This year, there is discussion, again, in appropriations to relook at the formula. But there is, there is not the recognition at the state level, no matter how much we advocate for it, about the idea of this being a military town, because people just do not seem to understand the impact positive, you know, in many respects. But that, what really I call it, like the yoke around the taxpayer of, of Groton, what that means. And that you have, you know, federal housing that is not, you're not getting, you're not really collecting property taxes for. Yes, you get federal impact aid, but it's much, at a much lower rate than it would be if we lived in Virginia. That's just because of, you know, the negotiations that come from a bigger state versus a smaller state. So we will continue to have to have that battle every budget season. You have been protected in the fact that you've been an alliance district. We do run into situations where there used to be 30 schools on the alliance district and now it's 33, went to 36. Nobody wants to get off alliance because you have the, the established funding that can't be moved. But there are forces within legislature that said, okay, you know, you've, you met your criteria for being alliance, it's time for you to get off. But with that would probably mean a big reduction in funding. And we know that your education funding is the major part of every town's budget. So there is discussions about relooking at the formula all over again. You know, we argue over what the formula should look like, you know, distressed community, English as a second language, do you base it on the income, the poverty level? I have some, I represent some towns up north that are, have a very high poverty rate, but they have a declining school enrollment. So they, even though they can't afford to have full-time kindergarten or their library is on a bus that's mobile, they're still getting cuts in their education. So I feel like it may not seem this way, but Groton is in a really positive place as far as funding for education. I don't know if you guys agree or disagree, but comparatively to other towns, not necessarily our cities, they, they tend to get the majority of the funding, but even some of our smaller towns, especially when it comes to education cost sharing. If you can imagine, I'm sorry, I meant special education excess cost grants. If you can imagine, if you live in a small town that, you know, has a very small population and it's costing you $35,000 a year to educate a student, you can't get any additional funding for a special education student until it's four and a half times 35,000. So you would have to spend an enormous amount for, to get anything extra from the state. So there is definitely a push to have this looked at. And every time we talk about this, we have advocates say, well, this is because we don't have county government and it's so expensive that every single town has to have a superintendent. You know, they have to have their own school districts. If we had county government, it would be a lot less expensive to educate students, but that's not what we want here in the state of Connecticut. So those are all things that are in flux. I wish we had a better.
Is some portion of the state funding federal money? Is it?
Yes.
Do you know what portion of that?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
It's over a quarter last time.
But it's, I think it's about 45%, but I don't, I can get you that exact number.
This federal money going, so out of that 27 million, 45% of it comes from the federal government?
I'm talking about the overall big package. So I can't tell you that Groton's, but yes, if you want to see that.
Still the whole thing.
Yep.
You're big, we, you might not know your biggest ask to the General Assembly in budget time every year, it is to continue to be held harmless with ECS. You might not know, that's what we advocate on behalf of you as your number one request, because it is your number one request. A $10 million drop in your ECS funding? We don't need to call you to tell, ask you, how would you fill that hole? We know the answer to that. So every year, that is your number one request for the budget line item. In case you didn't know, that's what we're advocating. It was bad. And I know you guys weren't on council, many of you were serving in other positions across the town. It was a bad time.
It was.
When we were there, when you got cut by $18 million in the first budget and the second budget and the third budget, and you ended up with a zero loss and you've gotten more money since then. I know you're looking for additional funds, but not to be instantly cut $10 million in one year has been your request. So when we talk about ECS formulas, I do caution you, and if Board of Ed members are watching, I caution them heavily on signing on to any requests without seeing how that would impact Groton. Your first, like, do we want to fund ECS differently? Yes, but I also want to make sure that Groton is held harmless and that we're not doing a new, we're not having member elected officials sign on to group letters of CAE or other larger areas without knowing how that affects this town, because this town's needs might be different than your surrounding town's needs. Again, we have a military base. We have different needs than our surrounding towns. So please be very cautious about signing on to those group letters. That has had us difficulty in the past. When the council or Board of Ed has been like, we'd love this budget cut. Well, you didn't, you didn't, when you saw the math, like, you didn't like the new plan when you saw how the math worked out for you. So do be cautious and advocating for the needs we have as a military community is very unique. It's one of the reasons why we, I know at our House members, we bring a lot of our fellow legislators here. They've heard Groton has a Navy base. They know that exists here. They know we're the submarine capital of the world. But how much housing that is and how many children live in the housing, we just drive through. We do the tour, not of the base, but of the housing. We don't go to the base without letting them know we're going.
Sometimes.
I need permission. I don't have ID that lets me in. But we do show people how many people live there, how many people live, and most folks who aren't from southeastern Connecticut, they've just haven't driven through, or maybe they drove through 30 or 40 years ago when it did look quite different. To say, wow, all these kids go to your public school system? Yes, they go, we love the kids, we love the families, we welcome them. But there are some budget needs relating to that that we talked to our colleagues about. So that is your number one ask and will continue to be your number one ask, to be held harmless because you can't, you don't want the February comment of you need to find $10 million in your budget. We know that. So we'd also like, you know, so being an alliance district isn't a bad thing. Being a distressed municipality is not a bad thing with some of these grants. We did send the Acts of Festing Municipalities, which did have grants for distressed municipalities to take a look at.
And on a similar wavelength, I, perhaps the, a new school, school funding issue, you know, it's where you step back and you see, look, Groton right now is seeing significant growth. What is that largely driven by? The cranes going up in the sky at Electric Boat. And so now, obviously, you know, enterprise zone funding as well, that's something to keep a very close eye on because as that grant list continues to grow at Electric Boat and more taxes will be forgiven, that means that there's a lot of revenue that Groton stands to lose. And again, that firewall is that reimbursement through the claims made through the enterprise zone. So your town manager has been in great communication with us, but again, that communication is key. So again, that's just something to bear in mind for, for future years because that fund, it's a bonded fund, the enterprise zone, you know, to be reimbursed and those claims are growing, right? More communities are tapping into it and obviously Groton's share will continue to be one of the larger, if not the largest in, in that pool.
But we're not funding it like we should.
No.
Agree at all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you for helping us keep our schools strong.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. Thank you so much all for being here. I really appreciate you coming. Just a couple of follow-up items. Senator Summers, you mentioned that homeowners can apply for the lead removal program. How do homeowners sign to that program?
If you go to the DPH website and you look at the grant program, it's just getting up started right now. You can go on there and it walks you through, there's certain criteria. It's given to homeowners, I believe, that have children under, I'm going to say under 12 that are living in the house or that they have identified, you know, certain things that actually have lead in them, whether it's paint removing or whether it's, you know, in the, the water, et cetera. It's, it's a lead-water funding program. So, and if you are renting, there is a place where you can fill out a, a claim so that the owner is contacted and then they can apply for the grant.
Thank you for the clarification.
And there is money in there because it's just kicking out right now.
Wonderful. Thank you. You mentioned introducing the bill with a 1% possible for municipalities to be able to tax. I appreciate that. I think it would be.
It's up to 1%. So you can set whatever you want. If you want to do it, you don't have to do it. And mine was specifically tailored, I mean, I have a few of those types of bills, but mine was specifically tailored for the impacts of tourism because we, we hear that, I hear that chronically. So it could be used to fund parking, it could be used to pay for police and fire, it could be used for the roads, for expanding your sewers if you need it. It can't be used for your school budget. We're trying to tie it to what it's used for. And, and I thought that it would be good for the hotel, a venue tax and also restaurants. The restaurant tax is generating over $100 million this year. I do have a bill in on that saying that revenue that is coming from that, I would like to see 25% of it put towards tourism so we can fully fund tourism because tourism, for every dollar we spend, it's now up to $9 back in the next year. So if we had put all our pension funds in tourism, we would be fatted with cash, right, in the state of Connecticut? And we woefully, inadequately fund tourism. Rhode Island spends more than we do. So if we could use 25% of that towards tourism, it would be a steady stream of income and obviously it would fluctuate depending on what that revenue brings in, then I had 50% returning to the municipality in which the person purchased their dinner. So Groton, Stonington, wherever else, Wallingford, wherever, would go back. And then the remainder would go to fight food insecurity. So that would be helpful for our TVCCAs, for our food shelters, for those who are experiencing that. That is another bill that I have in. So similar ideas, a little different take on things.
My apologies. That would be the second bill that you said you were introducing?
Yeah. I have, I have 67 bills that I just put in yesterday.
Sixty seven?
I do. That's nothing compared to some of people. And some are for environment, there's a lot of finance ones, there's a lot of appropriations ones. These are just ideas for different takes on how we can either reallocate funding that we're currently getting, that, you know, I feel like a restaurant tax is a tax that, you know, we're, we're paying if we go out, but a lot of tourists are paying. It's something that we didn't have previously. So how can we reutilize that to continue tourism to grow, to help the communities in which the tourism is in and where the meal was purchased? And also, how do we help better fund food insecurity? So I thought that was a nice little package. I don't know if any of these will go anywhere. All we can do is we put in our bills and our ideas and we try to advocate for them. A lot of them get pulled apart and little bits and pieces get put into other bills. But I have multiple bills like that. I don't want to bore you with all of them. I can send you a list of all of them if you want.
That would be great. And as somebody who works directly in food insecurity every day, I will always support funding food insecurity.
It makes sense. If I can afford to go out to dinner and I'm paying this little extra tax, that should go to maybe help people that can't afford to put food on their table. So that was sort of the thought behind it.
I do appreciate that. And we hear often from our constituents regarding the concerns about need for increasing police, need for concerns with the roads, parking, all of those things, especially down in Mystic. On the food insecurity, I'm going to hop over to funding school meals for all. I realize it's $90 million. It will always be something that I will stand in my soapbox for. It will always be something I support. I realize that it is hard to swallow $90 million, but I'm going to say it again, we support toilet paper and we fund toilet paper in our schools. Our children should be able to eat. So I'll step off that soapbox, but that is a huge push for me. A couple of other things. You talked about the air quality grants. Were those grants that we missed filing, John? Or were those school board?
School board.
The school? Okay. Okay. That's hard to swallow. And I'm going to talk about Medicaid ambulance reimbursement rate. I, I understand you said two, we're $231 million over budget in Medicaid. So the public understands this is something that we've been discussing recently. The 2024 state authorized rate for emergency medical services is anywhere between $920 per event to $2,018 per event. Medicare funds, so the federal dollars funds, $472 up to $812 per run or per medical service. The state Medicare rate is $352.70.
The state Medicaid rate?
State Medicaid rate. Did I say Medicare?
You did.
I'm sorry, state Medicaid rate. Over 50% of Groton ambulance runs are between, and that's between Mystic River and Groton ambulance, are Medicare, Medicaid or TRICARE, which falls into the same category of those rates. As a municipality, in FYE 23, we paid over $255,000. In FYE 24, we spent over $272,000. And in FYE 25, we are spending over $309,000 to supplement that. So that means as residents here in Groton, we are paying for other people's ambulance rides because the rates are so low that we have to fund our ambulances. And we should fund our ambulances. And I'm out of time, so I'll end with that.
And about the ambulances now, I do agree that the Medicaid rate is low. We cannot do anything at your state legislature about the Medicare or the TRICARE rate that's outside of our jurisdiction. But I would also add, when you are talking to the ambulance companies this year, please chat with them about how they get their bills paid by the private pay folks who have private health insurance. How they're working with their payments and how they're working, not just going to collections, how they're contacting folks who have the outstanding bills where no insurance is listed? Instead of assuming folks have no insurance, if, and I, I do at my, my full-time job, see medical bills every day, is what I do. But a lot of residents, when they are getting their medical attention at the ambulance, are not being asked because they need medical attention for their insurance card. And then when they get dropped off at their hospital, again, they're there longer, so at some point they become more stable and insurance information is exchanged. Our ambulance companies, again, are not doing anything wrong. They are treating people who are very sick. But during that treatment of sickness, they are not able to capture the private insurance for a lot of folks at the time. And when folks get their first ambulance bill, not everyone understands what to do. Not everyone understands and looks and says, hey, my TRICARE is not listed, my Blue Cross Blue Shield's not listed, my United Healthcare's not listed. They just see this $1,000 bill and they go, I don't have $1,000 and they kind of put it aside. And at a later date, they may be contacted by a collection commit person, a collection agency and be asked for things and may be able to make a payment plan or the period of time that their health insurance pays that bill may have lapsed because of the time that happens before the collection agency gets their Medicare information or their Blue Cross Blue Shield information. And you guys, the, again, the ambulance folks are doing amazing work, but there is money left on the table just due to collections. And I don't know if it's because they can't hire the staff to do the collections and maybe that's something they have to work regionally with. But besides the Medicaid rate, which I agree, does have to go up and hopefully we can find dollars to, to make all those things match. We want to make sure that they're capturing, folks are capturing the dollars available and trying to make that hole as little as possible on everyone, especially the ambulance companies. But folks are doing great work in the field, they just don't have opportunity to say, can I, you know, I'm not going to give you CPR unless I get your insurance card, is not what they say.
And I, I will say, it's very complicated on the billing, as many of you probably know, because depends who you have on that ambulance. because it depends who you have on that ambulance. Do you have a paramedic? Do you not have a paramedic? Is it for life-saving reasons? There's all these different levels of rate reimbursement versus, you know, I feel sick, so I'm transporting somebody to the hospital, and if they don't receive care, that ambulance, they can't bill. I mean, there's all these really complicated rules. I think the big issue we're seeing across the state of Connecticut is it's the mix, right? Nursing homes used to be able to survive better because they had some people that were paying out of pocket, you know, private pay. They had some that had long-term care insurance, and then they had Medicaid. Now what you're seeing in many cases is 90% Medicaid, and it's not enough to keep the lights on. That's true for doctors, too. So we, that's why we have this committee set up for the Medicaid rates. Connecticut's rates are woefully low compared to others. We do need to increase them. I was just on the phone last night till nine o'clock with radiologists talking about taking Medicaid patients. I think they get paid like $14 or something. And they can't continue if we don't increase the Medicaid rates. We have the same thing for every specialty, but it is a huge number for the state of Connecticut. So it's, it's a priority as far as, do you want to spend it here or are you going to spend it someplace else? And although it sounds like it's public health, that's actually a human service issue. So it's complicated, and I'm sure you're going to see a real push to raise all of the Medicaid rates. We've tried to raise Medicaid rates through public health for parity for mental health services. I mean, not too long ago, a primary care physician was reimbursed a higher rate for giving somebody a visit for depression than a psychiatrist. So talk about not being able to attract psychiatrists to the state of Connecticut. There's no parity in how we're supplementing Medicaid rates. So this group is looking at everything, and I'm hoping that the report will really shed a lot of light on where we are and where we should be. But I do want you to know, it's not an issue that we are not aware of and trying to figure out the best method. And this is a strain on every municipality. And unfortunately, where these folks are located, I'm sure that, I don't know what, I can't remember what you said their Medicaid burden was, but it's probably very high. 80% of the residents are Medicaid patients, did you say? Do you have the number?
I think it was over 50% are either Medicare or Medicaid.
Same thing, pretty much.
And TRICARE, basically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, sharing your thoughts with us and with a wealth of information. I'm not going to go through any specifics. Obviously, I'm in favor of all of these items, and anything you do to help Groton would be great. I did have one item I wanted to bring up because it didn't make the cut. I wanted to get your thoughts on stormwater authorities. I think we talked about it last year, maybe the year before. If there's any funding available for setting up such for planning, designing, or even moving forward with such plans, and just any thoughts or recommendations you had on setting one up, whether it's a regional or municipal stormwater authority, just something that I think we should be looking at. I'd love to hear your thoughts on if there's funding available or just any thoughts you have on that topic.
I would love to see New London's lead the region because New London's doing a great job with their stormwater authority. And, you know, we can utilize some of those systems set up regionally, and I think the statute does allow the regional as-is so that folks can utilize who maybe are smaller communities. I know Groton is, is large in square footage and has more people than New London, but you might be able to utilize some staffing and maybe only be paying a portion instead of, to get the portion of the help you need instead of, you know, hiring departments and growing departments because you can only do so much each budget year. So utilize what your friends next door have and learn from what they've done. But they do such good work in New London with the growth, with new building projects and getting that stormwater into a much, much better system for ecosystem and how it, everything works out in New London. They've been doing it great for years. It's something we can learn from and hear from Groton.
As Chris shared, and as you certainly know, New London has led the way in that respect. I think also just as much as they have with respect to the replacement of the lead pipes, for example. So, you know, both of those investments, again, will pay dividends in the long term with respect to public health, with respect to resilience. Again, you know, the stormwater authority funds can actually pay towards various resilience projects that obviously there are no shortage of them, especially in Mystic. Town manager and our delegation, the council have discussed, there are projects to the tunes of millions of dollars just with respect to stormwater management. So again, those are some things that it could pay for. Again, you know, that would be a new concept, right, for a good chunk of our taxpayers in large part because now everybody would be contributing towards that in the form of a taxation or a fee, depending on how you look at it. But again, the beauty of that fund is that it's going to a specific purpose that, you know, folks are paying into not just taxpayers, right, but even folks who are otherwise would not be, again-
Have the experience.
Yeah. We'll leave it at that. But I know ultimately, that's a conversation for the council. You already have the enabling legislation. So again, those would be conversations that the council should have. And any support we can provide, we certainly stand ready to do so.
I'll just add, I agree. I think it's a great idea. You know, you have to decide if you want to do it on a regional basis with somebody like New London. I am not aware of any state funding that can support you establishing your own authority at this point in time.
Thank you.
Counselor Oberlin?
Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking your time to come out. Obviously, you know you're always welcome, and it's great to see you out. My big things, you know, just, I know not everything made the list here because we kind of had to do a cutting, but for me across the board, education, public health, and the environment, and food equity and food insecurity, everything that falls within those are definitely priorities of mine. When thinking about food insecurity, you can also put that into public health. So with the Food For All, that's something back when I was on the RTM many years ago, I spoke up very openly about and stand with that, just as well as my counterpart here on the council. Russ stated that she's, you know, big on I-2 feel, that that is a public health concern to make sure folks can have equitable food at school as well as that way they can be educated. So also the environment, you know, back when I was on the RTM, you know, I was a big advocate at speaking up about the lead in the water, and to me, I feel like no level should be allowable. So to Senator Summers, I appreciate the fact that you stated that there's a chance, or there is, I don't want to quote you exactly, maybe you can say, but that the numbers are going to go down the allowable level, if I heard you correctly.
The allowable level did go down.
Perfect.
We can't get it to zero.
Okay.
That is, it's unreasonable to, you know, unobtainable at this point in time for any state to have a zero. But we have significantly reduced it, and that's why we have been able to advocate for DPH. That happened two years ago. We were able to pass that bill through public health to establish the lead program that we have now.
Right. And again, I agree with some others that spoke, that how New London has done well with the lead program. I've been advocating again for the lead program. I haven't had much support, so, but I hope that with these funds being available, I guess, looking at it from a town perspective, looking at like Board of Ed, education, or town buildings like our, you know, former middle school slash converted community center-ish building, I know there was a lead in there. I remember speaking up about that on the RTM and asking, since they found it in the high school, to have it tested. And in fact, I remember working with the town manager, and they found lead there and then had to put water out, and then they fixed the majority of the areas, but probably not the whole building. So how does the town then apply? Because the school, I know, has allowable levels. And if the numbers have changed, have they been notified yet to retest to make sure they move down to the new level? That's my question.
Everybody is required to have the same level. It's not different for schools than it is for individuals. You can find all that information right on the DPH website. And schools, I believe, have to test like the water fountains and on a regular basis. That's how it was initially found.
I guess my concern was that they were moved, and there were some moved to allowable levels. They had fixed some fixtures, and now if the numbers dropped, I'm just curious to see if they retested. So I will reach out to them to make sure that they're moving those numbers and adjusting to the allowable level.
And again, the federal money is for the pipes and the roads.
Yeah.
The state money is for the buildings.
Perfect.
So you may be applying for both.
Yeah.
Depending on what you need at the same time. New London had, did, has done with their money. And they've, they've made sure that they didn't pave a road that they were then going, that they were applying for federal money to redo the pipes. That's something you do want to be aware of. If you're thinking about, you know, changing a pipe, lead pipe on the road, you want to make sure you pave it after, not before. And be aware and let the residents know because some folks thought they were on a paving program and then didn't realize, oh, it became a two-step program. First the pipes, then the paving. But they were able to kind of utilize money a little better because you had the money to dig for the pipes and to pave, repay for that section, so the town didn't have to pay for the whole thing. They were able to save in the long run. For the residents on the road, it was a little longer under construction. So letting the residents know what's going on is always helpful for those juggles.
Thanks. And I guess, my question, I guess to you all, whoever wants to answer, the environmental stuff, what are we doing here as a coastal community to make sure with sea level rising and as well as, you know, the heat insecurity, folks that can't even afford air conditioning, talk about food insecurity? What other things do you guys see in coming down the pipe that are going to protect us on the coast here from the environmental side? It didn't make our priority list, unfortunately, but I do feel that that's a huge priority of mine that we hear over and over here. So that from the environmental side.
We had a great house bill last year, 5004. That was an environmental bill, made it through the House, was fully funded in the budget. Unfortunately, wasn't called in the Senate. So there's a bill ready to go, day one in session, ready to go with it. Hopefully, it'll make it further. We can do a little bit more. I know folks are very disappointed because a lot of folks put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that, you know, progress. Really great bill, groundbreaking legislation. We can always go further, but we got to get something over the finish line. And we got, we're ready to go.
Ready to go.
Ready to go. We'll certainly get it over the finish line. We could use some friends on the other side on it, but-
That's not, that's your House and Senate not getting along.
But nonetheless, you know, I think that is actually, in all seriousness, one strong desire. You know, we're all, your respective party labels going to be equally impacted by 20 and sea level rise by 2050, right here in Groton. And again, no party has a monopoly on a good idea pertaining on how to solve our climate crisis. So I am very excited to be working on, again, in a bipartisan manner, to address those issues. Again, Groton has already leading the way by virtue of the work done by this council historically over the last five years, hiring a resilience and sustainability manager, Megan Granato, who is working collaboratively with all of the town departments and our communities, with the council, with, you know, with our neighboring communities to tackle these issues. And that leadership has paid dividends and will continue to pay dividends. It's the reason why the community, we now have embarked on a climate action plan, have completed a resilience plan for downtown Mystic. And all of these, all of that groundwork is critical to get, you know, punch above our weight class for grant funding. So again, these issues certainly shouldn't be overlooked because they will obviously impact our residences, our small businesses. And so yes, that would be 5004 likely, again, to come up again this year. But any ideas that this council has with respect to improving environmental quality, but including your ideas in that proposal, certainly reach out to us.
So I do have a few environmental bills that can, that deal with what an individual homeowner could do to help combat sea level rise and what the town can do as far as when they're paving roads. And I don't want to get into it now because it's long and complicated, but I think that could have a real impact in people that are living along the shore, and it would also allow them to be able to, it's not going to fix it for 50 years, but it might fix it for 30 years. And it would help with the flooding that we're seeing, and it would also, I think, be palatable for people because you wouldn't have people necessarily in, let's say, Volentown paying for sea level rise along the Mystic Shore. So it, you know, when it's fully flushed out, I have it in. I also have in some environmental bills that we really need to focus on, we have a big dredging problem in the state of Connecticut. None of our marinas can dredge and be able to take their dredge spoils to the open EPA site because New York rejects the permits every single time. Our marinas are very impacted because we get all the silt from New York, so we, all of our marinas have to dredge. New York doesn't have that issue, so, you know, they don't care. They don't have to dredge like we do. But we're really impacting, you know, the Mystic River, all of the marinas along the Mystic River, really along the coastline. So if you can't dredge, your spot fills up for, you know, somebody who has a boat at a slip, you can't get out of the river. And that has a big economic impact as well as sea level rise with our marshes. So I have a bill in that talks about all of that stuff also. Andre's going to be busy looking at that with the new chair of environment. So I think, you know, there's the big 5004 that some people called the Green Monster. That was what it was nicknamed. And then there are, you know, smaller intentional bills that could be used locally to help our constituents that live along the shoreline that, you know, perhaps the Green Monster doesn't really talk about it in that kind of detail. So I think all of us are very keen on the environment and what can be done to strengthen our position for sea level rise and the things that we're seeing with climate change. It's just, I think we need a two-pronged approach. You know, one's a big overall package. The overall package is great, but the problem with the overall package is you have the House and the Senate fighting over what should be in it, and sometimes it's harder to get those big, big packages through versus doing smaller intentional bills. So I think you'll see a lot in the environment this year.
And as Senator was mentioning with the dredge spoils, for example, it can be used to actually bring back certain bird species that, you know, the bird species such as the small saltmarsh sparrow, that when they're nesting here in, for example, Bluff Point or Barn Island, those are species that are, could in the next 10 years, could be on the brink of extinction. And so, and that's largely driven in large part because their nesting areas are getting overtaken by those higher tides. And so those bird spoils could actually be used to elevate-
That's my bill. Did you steal my bill?
Well, maybe we talked to similar people. And that's the thing, you know, that's the, that's the beauty of the legislature. Again, no, no person has a monopoly on a good idea, but you can work with someone who has that idea, right? And it can become a bipartisan bill.
You can sign on to that.
But nonetheless, it's really important that I think we start elevating these discussions because the clock is ticking. Again, just a dredging issue in Mystic River, for example.
It's perfect for that, and it would really help. And it would keep our marshes from being, you know, the marsh is really the, like, the birthing place of our whole marine ecosystem, and it's drowning. So one thing you could do is dredge in the Mystic River, and if it's clean, you could blow it into the marsh. You're raising the marsh. You're helping with the dredging. You know, little birds like the oyster catcher, I saw the first one on Halfpenny Island that I've ever seen. They're all, we're losing all of them because their habitat is being destroyed. So there are solutions that have come out of being creative because we can't dredge. It's probably not going to work dredging electric boat in the Thames River, but in our marinas along our estuaries, it could be something that could really be beneficial. And we're not reinventing the world because there's, did I say that right? I'm tired tonight. But New Jersey does it. Maryland does it. And so looking to what other states do, that, you know, sometimes our agencies are so set in their ways, they, they need a different idea to try to get them to think about things differently. So these small little intentional approaches plus the big thing overall. So we'll see. But I think you'll see a lot of environmental bills.
And dredging for my district, which is not Mystic River. I have, you know, with Groton City, with EB, with the Navy Base, with the marinas and the businesses around there and on the New London side, we have to be aware that not all of this stuff is reusable. There is pollution in these-
We have a cat system, right?
Yes. But there is pollution in a lot of these dredging areas. And as you're coming into the silt, if it's coming, there are marinas near businesses that, again, in the 50s, 60s, when these areas were used, we do not, it was before the EPA. Things were put in the water in our area, in Groton City and in New London, the working ports, when it was legal, which are very different than what's legal today, and those spoils are still right there in our marinas. So I do want to be, I know, you know, people in Mystic have a different approach to dredging, but we also have a very different pollution environmental approach just on the side of, on the other side of town. So please be aware as to how we can make sure we're not bringing, how we, if we're bringing up pollution, we're bringing up safely. What that really is, it's very expensive. So the businesses who are trying to dredge, be it our large businesses like EB, as well as our smaller marinas, when you know you have an area that is, does have pollution next to it, they are doing it at a much higher price because they have to get rid of those polluted spoils. And that's kind of the struggle federally. as our smaller marinas, when you know you have an area that is, does have pollution next to it, they are doing it at a much higher price because they have to get rid of those polluted spoils. And that's kind of the struggle federally. We're dealing with New York not accepting our polluted spoils, but not all of our dredging in Connecticut or even in Groton is as clean as some, as the Mystic River spoils are.
Now, in case, actually, case in point, so I know the town manager and also the director of Public Works, Greg Hanover, has been very much involved in these conversations over the years, but there is some piping in Mystic, for example, that DOT owns, that is taking all that runoff and right into the Mystic River, right? And as a result, that channel is getting clogged up with more and more debris. And at some point, it is going to have to be removed. But again, that is a lot of debris that probably should not be used for certain resilience projects. So again, it is important to distinguish between, you know, polluted spoils and not polluted spoils. But that is the beauty of, of Groton, right? We've got two incredible rivers, Mystic River and the Thames River. Have the privilege of representing both. And certainly, I think we are all in agreement that we should do everything in our power to protect these assets so future generations can enjoy them.
I just want to close with saying thank you for coming. And again, education, public health, environment, food, you know, insecurities and equity, and definitely clean drinking water are priorities to me. So I thank you for your time.
Beeping. It was the time.
Thank you, Councilor Parker.
Sorry, I didn't know what the beeping was.
Welcome to the timer.
It sounded like he said it was a microwave. You're making popcorn now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that's our timer. We only have three minutes.
Got it, okay.
Thank you guys for coming. A lot of these are what I want. You know, I'm on the TVCCA board, so I'm going to push for that. Yes, they're going to reapply again, to give you guys heads up. They're thinking of other ways of funding streams of trying to do as best they can. Heating assistance, I understand that's probably up. A lot of these ticket items are big-ticket items. And what I'm hearing is you would love to help, but we don't know what the budget's going to be. So we need to be very mindful of what's going on and maybe stick to a minimal increase if we can, find solutions as best we can, and work with you guys and communicate. And you guys don't have to come in all the time. You're available via email and phone calls. Is that my gist, is that right? Thank you for providing the legislative research, Office Legislative Research information and what the 2024 Acts affecting municipalities are. This is public knowledge, it's on your website.
Yep. There's a page for each type of law. So there's Acts affecting education, Acts affecting elections, Acts affecting labor. Every summer, then our nonpartisan staff, which means they're not hired by Democrats or Republicans, puts these together, and they're great resources.
You can find this online, too.
Online, CGA.CT.gov.
And they have it broken down, too. You can, you can have Acts affecting education, you know, it's all, and you can pull whatever you want.
So, Madam Mayor, can I ask Mr. Burt if you can post this online so that, or have a link to go to both, so that the public can see it, too? Because sometimes having a short version of stuff is a lot easier to read. Again, thank you guys for being here. If I have anything, I'll reach out. Thank you.
And just quickly, thank you for your leadership on TVCCA. I feel like maybe we haven't properly celebrated a win, but I would note, you know, just our delegation was successful in acquiring the $2 million in pre-development costs for the TVCCA Early Childhood Center. And it's going to be a game changer for our kiddos. We got to double down on, on our investment in early childhood, especially with where our workforce is heading locally. So thank you for being a partner in that, and let's, let's get it over the finish line.
Thank you.
Your question?
I just wanted to ask for the mayor if the town manager could post the lead stuff online for the public as well, so they can access those documents.
Sure.
Okay. Well, because we're going over two hours here, we're going to keep it to one round of councilors tonight, okay?
Great.
So, Councilor Bertino, did you want to chime in on anything?
Madam Mayor, there is nothing I can chime in on that nobody has spoken today. And I've been listening and I've been checking off everything. I'm good. You, you folks are going to do a sprout as best you can, obviously. But anything that helps the little guy, the heating assistance, the Medicaid for the ambulances, the veterans, the school meals. When we all do better, we all do better. So that's, you know, like I'm concerned about, the little constituents here who need to help the best, the most. A lot of big picture stuff, but sometimes a little picture, they're better.
So there's just one other thing I wanted to bring up really quickly, and I know we've been going a long time, is there has been a lot of questions on the veterans exemption, property tax exemption. I just want people to know, there are 1,209 in the state of Connecticut that fit the criteria. The bill may have been written in a way that is, can be interpreted other than it was intended, and we are planning to fix this before, you have to certify your grant list by January 31st. So we're hoping that we will go in the beginning part of January to be able to fix this when we do some judges. So the intent is 100% disabled from wartime service, not a combination of disabilities. And there is 1,209 in the state of Connecticut. I know towns were told, you know, Stonington was going to have two, and they ended up with 49 because they're coming in with a certain form. We are looking to try to get the correct form, so you would have an example of what the form looks like that you need to be able to qualify for this property tax exemption. We have asked for things we can't have. We said, if you know there's 1,209, can you give us the list? But we can't because it's a HIPAA issue. So I just wanted to let you know, we hear this repeatedly from towns. I was at a cog meeting today, and there was a lot of people upset about the amount of property tax forgiveness or, you know, that it's not going to be charged because the numbers were much higher than what was anticipated. But again, the numbers will come back to what you were told. There just needs to be a fix in the bill. Thank God I didn't write that bill. It's, it's problematic the way it's written, but it will be fixed.
So the Acts affecting municipalities do explain the bill with the intent, and that intent was crystal clear on the House floor. I know it was voted in the Senate as a group of bills, so that intent...
It went on consent.
It went on the consent calendar when they vote like 30 bills at the same time. But in the House, it was individually debated, so that intent was crystal clear on the House floor. And the letter, the language in the bill is the language used by the VA. So for folks in Connecticut, it might not be the language that folks are used to seeing with the 100%. 100% permanently and totally disabled was not there. It's the VA's determination of what we colloquially call 100% permanently totally disabled. And it's all the intent and what was said on the House floor is in your Acts affecting municipalities. So while the bill doesn't need a fix or rewrite, a clarification a lot of municipalities have asked for, and I know our, a lot of our leadership delegation, including Ritter and Senator Looney, and a lot of us did sign on to a letter to give the municipalities language that they have, showing what's in this Acts affecting municipality, signed by a bunch of us, so that they had that to help them until January happens, so they can see that. And it does apply to spouses in Acts affecting municipality as well. So if your spouse did pass away from their 100% service, service-connected disability for being permanently and totally disabled, the spouse can get that benefit as well in the town. We know the towns would also like pilot money to offset that. We've heard you, we understand that. Hopefully, we can start making some progress in that direction as well.
But it does need a rewrite. I know Kathy Austin's working on it because, for example, it doesn't include things like a trailer home. And we have a lot of disabled veterans that are living in trailers. So those things need to be included. So I know that there is a commitment to fix that so that municipalities will have a better and clearer understanding of exactly what the impact overall through the entire state of Connecticut is, 1,209 people. So if, you know, a few of my towns have said, oh, I have 149 people, you know, that's just not going to meet the criteria that was intended. So we're going to try to clarify it and do a few rewrites and have it done the beginning part of January.
Thank you.
Just to make you feel better, if that makes you feel better.
My question through the mayor to Senator Summers, you mentioned wartime disabled. If they're not 100% disabled and they didn't serve in a war, does this also apply to them?
It may, depending on how the Veterans Administration made them permanently and totally disabled. So if the Veterans Administration has someone 100% permanently totally disabled, and they could be serving stateside, they could have been 100% permanently totally disabled from, you know, bad water in one of the bases that's here stateside. They could have gotten cancer that made them disabled for that. So folks who are not wartime may very well be 100% permanently totally disabled from the VA. But what it isn't is taking like your leg rating, plus your shoulder rating, plus your hearing rating, up to 100%. That, the words in the bill is not what the VA uses for combined ratings. It is a specific VA rating, and these folks are very disabled. They are not working. It's a very select, very small group of folks who have given up their bodies and minds due to the military service in some way.
Right. And I think it's, the big issue is this combination as Senator, sorry, Representative Conley has, it's been a long day, has described. So I can tell you, Greenwich, for example, has one individual who has a combination, but if you look at the paperwork, it says 100% disabled. And now they are not collecting a $65,000 property tax, even though this person is still working. So that was not what this is intended for. This is intended for the person who, you know, had a wartime injury, I'm going to say was exposed to Agent Orange, can't work, lives in a house, and this was something, that was the intent of this. And so we need to clarify it so that the assessors don't feel like they could be sued because they're coming in with something saying, I'm 100% disabled. So that's where we're going, and to include things like the trailer, that wasn't included in that, which we think is important. And there's a few other little nuances that need to be fixed. But I wanted to share that because you didn't ask, and there was a lot of those questions this morning at this cog meeting from various towns. So I wanted to let you know that we are aware and we're doing our best to fix it, so that... And this went, this came from language from veterans that was clear, and went to finance, finance, put their spin on it and wrote it in a way that, from what we're being told, is not as clear as it should be.
Thank you. So I was going to bring up the veterans, so you jumped, you beat me to the topic, so... But I think the maximum is $3,500. Is that correct?
There's no cap.
There's no cap? Okay. I thought there was a cap. Okay. But as what I've heard from you tonight, this is even more reason that we needed a grant writer. So we are using, we have a grant writer for our ARBA, and that's going to transition over to a grant writer, which I'm very excited about. And this just sealed the deal for me that we did the right thing because I think, as you've said, we're going to need one. My concern is that with potential, the way it's being spoken about on the federal level, their budget, they're talking about very broad sweeping kind of cuts that potentially even like Board of Education items on the federal level and maybe possibly DoD money for our school, which may not affect other, you know, municipalities, but it will definitely affect us. Department of Education cuts, other things that may happen on the federal level that will specifically hit our community more so. And, and if we get hit pretty hard, will the state be there to help us? Will the state potentially do any other things like lift the MBR? Will they do other things that we may have to become creative on how to go forward if there are significant cuts?
So this, we can be creative with our state funding. We, if it's something that would, if the federal government cuts something that hits Groton different than others because of our military and our federal community, we wouldn't lift MBR for the state of Connecticut. What we, what I would recommend is that we would do, you know, and offset something in the implement or something in the budget, not in the regular budget, something that's specific. And we did even do that in 17. Remember when we had the government shutdown and we had, we needed specific food money for New London County? When folks through Coast Guard attached did not have, did not get paid and did not have money for food? We did an immediate House and Senate, we went in on a special session day and did an immediate funding to areas in New London County for that. So we can, we have the ability to be very creative within the House and the Senate and with the governor signing, and we did it, we did it last time in 17, and we, I hope we don't have to do it again, but we can do it again if we have to. So it's not all dark and drear, even though we're like, plan for the worst, expect for the best, and we'll probably fall somewhere, somewhere between those things. But that's why it is important, it's important that we pay attention to our federal budgets. I know our federal delegation is great and keeps us and you guys informed. We get the same, you're copied on the same emails we are to let us know what's going on. But it is going to, federal cuts do hit Groton a little quicker than they hit the state of Connecticut in the, in the federal funded. But the Medicaid stuff's going to, if they change Medicaid eligibility and they reduce it down, the income level for folks who have Medicaid, and they kick thousands of people off Medicaid, that's going to be a big budgetary discussion and throughout the state as to, you know, do we use our rainy day fund to cover that hole? Or do we do other, do we keep the federal limits? And, or do we do part of it? And how do we work through that, that struggle together?
Right. I, I'm just going to, because it's sort of late and late, and we've had you here for quite some time, so I wanted to just sort of get through my list really quick. You don't even have to respond, just let me share some of my thoughts. If at all possible, can the state just back off on some unmandated, you know, unfunded mandates? Because sort of appreciate that for a while, at least getting through the next, you know, if, if we are expecting cuts from the federal level, it would be nice not to have unfunded mandates coming further at us. The part I, the part that's in here, because I did have concerns with everything, was invite our state legislators to attend more council meetings. I'm not asking you to come to all of them, but when there are things that are happening on the state level that you know are truly going to impact us, please reach out specifically. There's so much that happens at the state that we're, we're so busy taking care of what's going on here, that sometimes it's hard to follow some of the things that are going on in the state. So if things are definitely going to impact us, would you please just, I know you have newsletters and things of that nature, but please reach out to us directly and say, hey, this happened, you need to really keep your heads up on what's happening here. And then we'll definitely start watching that, you know? But we need the heads up from you guys to know to watch it. That's, that's one of the issues. I'm not going to go on for more. There are things in here, but I don't think they're at all worth talking about at the time. But thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. And please do good for us. Thank you.
Can we take a recess?
Absolutely. Thank you all. It is 8:40, and we're going to, I'm just letting you know, our council took about, what, 27 minutes? The rest was all... No, I'm just teasing. So it's 8:40, so we're going to take a recess, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes or so. Thank you all.
Recreational shellfish management plan for the town of Groton.
Second, Borlan.
Move by Gajaski, second by Borlan.
And we do have guests here to answer any questions.
Okay. Would you like to come up to the table?
Sure, if you'd like.
Please.
Weren't you clean-shaven when you got here?
What's that? Yeah, I was taking bets on how long you guys could stay awake. It gets very, very long, I can tell. Thank you for everything you do. My name is Ted Rathgen and I am a full commissioner of the Groton Shellfish Commission and a former warden for many, many years. This is Rich Erns, he's one of our wardens and he's out there daily fighting all the poachers, which we don't really have. Just a joke. We've been working on this for three years. This package is based on experience. We are probably the most productive shellfish, recreational shellfish program in the state. We sell more permits than any other commission in the state. Typically on a Sunday or a Saturday in the summer, you can expect to see between 50 and 60 clambers out on our water. And it gets very difficult for an enforcement way that is not intrusive, but it gets the point across. Many, many years ago, our program was based on a paper permit. And on that permit says, if you lose the permit, you'll have to buy a new permit. And when you're clamming, you're in the water. So very few people wanted to risk losing their licenses or permits, so they would not bring them with them. And since we do, majority of our patrolling in a boat, because Bluff Point, for instance, is a very long area, but we also have to go around into Mumford Cove seasonally. Occasionally, we have to go into the Mystic River. That's our area. And it's usually only one warden out at the time, so we do want to talk to everybody. We feel like we're educators. So we do want to talk to everybody that's out in the water, see how things are going, and make sure they have their licenses. So one of the things that we came up with is having a visible pass that's waterproof, that's on a lanyard, and it's going to be based on the yearly, year that they purchase. And so what we've asked to change is, you would buy your seasonal permit in January and it would go through until the end of December, and it's going to be color-coded. So when we do approach a clamber, they'll have that hopefully around their neck with a lanyard. We also are going to maintain a hard copy at the point of sale. On that, it will, the colors will indicate if it's a week pass, a month pass, or a yearly pass, and that will help us determine where do we move on from here. So that's going to be a very big time saver for us. And one of the dilemmas of not having this is when we use the paper pass, and if they didn't have it, it was very, very difficult to enforce. Because A, they didn't have any identification, all right? And if they did have identification, it was a mile back in their car. And as wardens, three or four-hour shift, and 50 people that we have to speak to, it was pretty hard for us to make them go back to their car, and while we wait for them to get back when they're wearing waders. So this was one of the big changes that we wanted to make, and I think it's a good change. And I hope everyone can support that. Secondly, we used to have day passes, and they were very confusing. Because if they went and got a day pass and they didn't go to our hotline to see that we were closed for various reasons, for health reasons or after a rain. And a lot of times, our vendors, some vendors in particular, may not have gotten the notice that our beds are closed. So we've eliminated that one-day pass for a one-week pass, because once they paid for the pass, it was difficult for them to get refunded. So that was one of the bigger changes. You'll notice, we did raise the price by $5 right across the board. And the reason for that is sustainability. Imagine 50 people going out on the river, harvesting a pack, which is two gallons of clams. That roughly equates to 100 clams, okay? And if you were to buy them at any store, and especially even wholesale, those clams retail for 45 cents each. So we're very aware of the different, we want to make sure that our seniors, our veterans, and everyone can afford to do this, but our payback period for a seasonal pass is one pack. So if they go out one day and get their pack of clams, they've covered the cost of what they would have to buy, you know, at a store. So that's how we figured this out. We have a very aggressive stocking program. We put in anywhere from 130,000 to 150,000 clams in the Paquonic River every year, not including oysters. We begin with getting smaller, like a spat, any size, like a thumbnail, and we get 100,000 of them. They're very expensive. We have to travel to certified growers in Massachusetts to put them in. And the survival rate in them is not very good, because they're small. It's about a 30% survival, and that's all factored in. And then to bring in to larger, like topnecks and cherry stones, which are in edible and legal size, we travel again all the way, well, we have a vendor that will provide them for us, but it is about 40 cents per clam. And we bring them in because they're good reproduction stock, so the river is fully stocked at all times. So we're trying to make a very sustainable resource. It's very difficult to do, and that's why some of these changes are important. In the past, you'll see people showing up with a cooler, five-gallon bucket, and they think five gallons is two gallons, and there's overharvesting all the time. And that's one of the biggest offenses we have had. So we have now made it possible where they have to bring a one-pack basket, that we can see their catch. So when we go by, they can hold up their catch, and we know what they have. Now, that doesn't eliminate the fact they may be taking smalls, and we pretty much know, being there, the people that are not following the law on size limits. So what we've required is every clamber will bring a gauge, and we can provide the gauge for them. And that gauge measures at two inches across. So that's going to be instituted as well. So we're going to ask for a two-gallon, which is a one-pack basket. We're going to be asking for the gauge, okay? And we want to see a visible license. In the past, because we didn't see it, we had a very difficult time enforcing anything. And our only means, and it was never really listed on our bylaws, was to confiscate their catch if they're in violation. And if you think about it, they've been out there for two hours and they're violating it, we just, we take their catch, okay? And in the past, it was a $50 fine. But if we had no identification, we couldn't write a ticket unless we walked all the way to their car. And so we're trying to make it so, we want to educate them, we're going to give them a chance and say, hey, look, you've got a bunch of smalls. Throw the smalls back, stick with the legal size, show them what to do. We will mark that pass. It will be punched with a violation, which is a verbal warning that they've been taught. But if we catch them again, and then we're going to confiscate their catch, punch it again. Third time, the license is revoked. So there's really no money being transferred. Back and forth is a violation, but it's more a vegetational part. We've also modified the tools they can use. There are commercial means of collecting shellfish, and we've had on occasion, and it's legal, and we want to make it not legal, but people will come in with commercial rigs, and they can go in the deepest parts of the water, and it's not tide-specific, and they can go and get their catch. The dilemma is, if they do that on high tide and there's no warden there, what's to say they get greedy? And they could be there for an hour and they could probably take five, 10, 15 gallons. And we want to prevent that, because our shellfish cannot be sold or transferred or bartered with. It's for your own consumption. So we have put a lot of thought into this. And we're doing it on both the consumer side, a sustainability side, and an enforcement side. And I hope you all will approve our changes. We'd like to get it done for the first of the year, so our passes can start in January, because it's a January to December purchase. Questions?
Thank you. Councilor Borlan.
Thank you. I really appreciate everything that you're doing, and I've spent some years in the past getting passes myself and throwing down, and so I'm familiar with the process. And I have to admit, I've had a few of my passes get pretty wet and like trying to dry them out or go.
We find them floating a lot in the river, too.
Yes. One of the other things, I love this idea of the plastic and the brightness of it, I think it's great. I also think from a safety perspective, it's also if someone's out there, became ill or injured, that they have some identification on them, because most people don't. So I think it's, you've got to look at it as a broad thing, so I think that's a great, huge enhancement. Some of the things, when I was researching and reading up on this, in some different states and towns, when I was just looking at passes and how they designed them, I think this is pretty top-notch, I think it's going to be a nice addition. Some even added the little measuring thing on the side of the card, they put the markers, they said the width, which is, I don't know if it's something you can add if the card is even long enough, because I'm not sure if this is actual size or just.
Yeah, they're not much larger, and space is very, very. So what we do is, we actually give them a two-inch ring, and they can hook it right on their lanyard. And so they can, you know, do it that way. It's very effective. And look, if it's a hair short, we don't really know. But, you know, if they're taking something that's the size of a quarter and claim it's two inches across, that's a problem.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like I said, very familiar with this, and my son tried doing this a little bit recreational and had a couple passes in the past. Now he's up in Maine Maritime Academy, and they have a shellfish up in Castine in Bar Harbor area, and he's been involved a little bit with that up there. But anyway, it's definitely important. I think it's great to have this, and I think, I remember my kids being younger and teaching them how to do this, it was kind of fun. And I must admit, I haven't done it in quite some time, so I appreciate all that you guys are doing. I think, you know, what I read through, I don't see anything here. I think that the modest increase is important for the sustainable side. I think you guys are doing it very driven. Are there any deviations for veterans, military, or everyone plays the same?
We, that's why I brought up the amount of money. I'm a veteran myself, and, but I do understand, if you have a hankering for clams and you're having to go buy them, you're going to pay $8 a pound. And so that's how we factored our numbers in. So again, you know, one pack basket is equivalent to the cost of a year pass. And so that's how we made the justification on it. And secondly, again, we have people that volunteer to fill out this paperwork for us. And how do you collect the right data for a veteran? Do I bring my DDU 214? I don't have any other pass since I only served five years. So how do you do that? And we just, we find that's going to be a very difficult process, so that's why we factored that price into it as well.
Yeah, no, I don't want to lose money. Is there any, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. No, I appreciate that, and I think it really does put it in perspective. You know, I do think, you know, increasing it, I think we've been very low. Is there any difference for people from out of town?
Yes, there is.
And what's the difference, just for the record for people to hear?
I'm sorry, I haven't committed the new prices, but it's typically $10 more than a resident. And quite honestly, they're the ones we want to sell the tickets to, or the permits to, because they may only visit for two or three times. And Richard tests us, we have shellfish, shellfishers that are there three or four days a week. I don't know what they do with them all, they get their pack, they're happy. We've got names for them, like the Gout Brothers, because you have to have gout to feed all the clams that they do, but they come every, they're three days a week, so, but they're in town. Out-of-town people, we rarely see more than once or twice.
Okay.
And we, not to interrupt, but we do have a break for people over 60, 65 and older.
Yes.
I think you did ask that, the veteran.
No, I think this is great, and, you know, one thing I would recommend is maybe a little bit more advertising for the locals. I think some people don't even realize it exists, so definitely coordinate, get some more.
Well, if you notice, it's a QR code on there, and we've already modified it, so if somebody wants to know if we're open, closed, any regulations, they can go to that code. Our hotline is always talking, you can call this number, which is, appears on there, it tells if we're open, we're closed, when we anticipate opening. And we're going to be adding some other things, you know, on there, like, for instance, a good suggestion was, make sure your shellfish is on ice. I mean, the minute you harvest them and get them on shore, get them on ice. So there are a lot of things that we have been doing, and we've been bringing in kids from the tribal nation, and some, during the summer, we've been doing a lot of things with them, bringing them down, giving a day of what it's like to shellfish, and it's tied in with Project Go. And we've been doing a lot, we've been doing an awful lot, doing water sampling as well. We're sampling our water all the time, and so all that information's out there for everyone.
Yeah, well, thank you. And the link to get to this, I guess, through the mayor, through the town manager, for folks that maybe are new to our town that want to partake in the recreation, is it easy to find? The link so they know that this is available to them?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the website. I'm sure it's out there, but I'll double-check.
Yeah, I definitely think it would be, once this is up and running, maybe putting these new passes, once they're finalized, up on the page as soon as it's approved, especially on our town page, letting people know the transition's coming, you know, taking it from your page and add it on a broader page, I think would be great for people to share. But I thank you so much, and I just think it's a no-brainer for me. It's nicely done.
Councilor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your work on this. Three years is a long time to study this, and it's very obvious, and it's, I have to say, as a Midwest-born and raised girl, I know very little about shellfish until I read through this, and so I greatly appreciate it. Additionally, I had a constituent reach out to me and say, please support this, who does shellfish a lot, so I absolutely will be supporting this. And I do appreciate, like, one of the big things I saw was your increase in prices, so I did look at the numbers, and it is like the cheapest sport you could ever do.
It is.
Really. I mean, a yearly pass is $40 for residents and $55 for non-residents. You can't get a better bang for your buck with that. So thank you for all of your work, and thank you for all that you do.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for educating.
Councilor Gajaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Commissioner Rathgen and Warden Erns.
Erns, correct.
For coming this evening, this is an incredible document, incredibly well-written, and very impressive, thorough. I do have a couple of questions. I saw in the weekly passing, it said Sunday to Saturday. I was wondering if it could, through the mayor, I was wondering if it could possibly be Monday to Sunday, just in case somebody has the weekend, is here for the weekend, visiting out of town.
So what would you like to see? It's changed the, from.
Yeah. Weekly permits begin on Sunday and expire on Saturday.
Yeah. I was thinking, through the mayor, I was thinking.
Monday to Sunday?
Monday to Sunday, just because somebody may be visiting from out of town and may want, and they're not going to be, they're only going to be here one day, and they may want to shellfish two days, so just somewhere around that, just an idea. But I think it'd be something to consider. I know that the Sunday to Saturday, the week is Sunday to Saturday, but really.
It is a good point.
Yeah.
And especially rain.
Yeah, that too. And then my last question was, so on page seven of the packet, it says, all prohibited areas. It says, all waters located within marinas, proper or mooring fields of marinas operated on a year-round basis shall be classified as prohibited.
Correct.
So, but then, if you go to the map on page 19, I know on our side of the river that there is a very large mooring field, and it's saying conditionally approved seasonal.
Okay. Let's see, on page 19.
Yep.
And where are you, who I'm referring to?
So.
On the Mystic River?
Yeah. If you see, I'm referring to the conditionally approved seasonal line. And then, I'm just kind of wondering why that is, if it says in here that it's.
Counselor, that happens to be a commercial bed, and it's not open to the public, and they have a whole different set of rules on how they operate. And it's all done by water sampling, time of year, and the amount of boats that are in the harbor. And that's how they clarify that. There's a whole new step that happens. So if it's conditionally closed or unconditionally closed, the product can be grown there, but it has to be relayed to an area where they can deporate. And that means they cleanse themselves, and they have to stay up to six months there. So they can grow them there, but they have to transport them to another area where they get cleansed before they can be sold. So what you're looking at is our commercial maps, and that's something that we're working on now, just to make some clarity on it. But that's also managed by the Department of Agriculture and Bureau of Aquaculture. They set those parameters.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I agree, because there was another, it was, it said conditionally restricted on the other side of.
Yeah. So just so you know, where our recreational areas are, is, it is Paquonic River, okay, from the Broken Bridge, okay, south. Nothing north of the Broken Bridge. From, I think it's end of October, November, when's the Mumford?
November 1 to the end of April, Mumford Cove.
Mumford Cove is conditionally opened. And that means we have to go through so many, we have to do meat samples, algae samples, and water samples for several months before they'll conditionally open it for that period of time. And then they reclose at the end of April, and that's when the boats start coming back in to the mooring. So when there's, I think, an accedence of 20 moorings and boats are occupied, it's closed. Okay? So that, so there are two primary areas that shellfishing is allowed currently.
Got it. And that makes, I thought you said you were an educator, and I greatly thank you for educating me on that.
All right.
And thank you so much for your work. And Madam Mayor, you're back.
Thanks. I'm not hearing from anybody.
Yeah, me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Jones, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Council Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. This is great, and I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, and I'm really glad who we have on our commissions.
We have a really good group of people.
Yeah. So how many permits a year do you issue?
1,500.
Yeah.
And out of that, you're able to pay for the seeding of?
Paying for the seeding, paying for the wardens, and operating our vessel.
Okay.
And like, we have printing fees, things of that nature, but we're, we sustain ourselves. And that's why it's important to keep the stock at a premium. People know they come here and they're successful, it's really not a game of hunting, it's more like hunter-gathering, and if they know what they're doing, every time they come, they have a success. And so the more we sell in the permits, the more we can keep adding. And the benefit of it is, the Paquonic River rarely, rarely closes for water quality issues. And you can contribute that to our oyster population, which filters 50 gallons a day, and the clam population, which does the same. And it's amazing how our water quality meets with all other areas. We rarely close for water quality issues, and it's usually after a very heavy rain and it's in one location. So we do, what, six samples in the Paquonic, or five?
Five, five locations.
We do five locations, and we may have one location closed.
Occasionally.
And then we have to retest again, and it's usually minor.
What you're saying is, it's our shellfish that keep the water.
Oh, heck, yeah.
They filters, they filter.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic, that wildlife is what's keeping everything.
And also, the Mystic River is the same thing, there are so many oysters in there. They've consumed, I'm sorry, I need to move on.
No, oh, no, I was, sorry, it was about the clock. I stopped it and then started, I was like, that was me.
I can only tell you that the Mystic River is becoming cleaner and cleaner and cleaner by the day, so much so that the nutrient levels are low. And that means the oysters are hungry, so we're praying for a little rain right now.
Huh. Who runs the oyster bays at a Bluff Point? I noticed there's always people out there harvesting.
Oh, the one off of Baker's Cove?
I guess so, yeah. When you walk up along.
Off Bluff Point.
Yeah. That's Eros, which is Mystic Oysters, that's their least bit.
That's the least bit, okay. And where does somebody go to get their pass? How does they, how do they do that?
We have, let's see.
Police station.
The police station, we have it at the town clerk, and then we have it at, I only call it Dottie's, but.
Ken's.
Ken's, Tackle.
Yeah.
And they're the three locations. The police department, you can get your shellfishing license at 1:00 in the morning.
With the correct change.
Yes.
How many people call your shellfish hotline?
All the time.
So my only change to this would be to make your shellfish hotline number bigger.
Okay, that's a good point.
Because I can read this, but you know, as you get older and your eyes aren't so great, and you don't have your glasses because you're.
Increase the font.
It might be nice to have that. It's easy to do, we have plenty of room, and you could just.
Thank you.
See the same size as the Groton Shellfish Commission recreational permit. That.
We'll do it. And it's actually going to be this size, what's on here, so you can see the number quite well on this, and this is, this will be the side of the actual permit. That's just a.
Reduce sign. Yeah, they're fairly.
Oh, I see, okay. But, I mean, still, just make it nice and.
Thank you.
It is a couple.
If they're calling all the time, then they're using it, so that's great. Correct?
Most people have it on speed dial on their phones.
Okay.
Pros.
On set?
Yeah, set.
Councilor Regina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great reading. I learned a lot. I'd really like to take a, take the one-day course out in the water with you at some point.
All the time, we do it all the time.
But my only question, I understand the dates necessary in the yearly pass, and the dates necessary in the monthly pass, but the weekly pass, why wouldn't we just do seven days from the date of purchase?
It's a good question, and I can, I can find out further for you. And I know we've had a lot of debate about the dates.
Okay.
Especially the first year, because there's going to be overlaps, and people that bought their permits, say, last June, and they expire this June. So we have worked out a way where they're, they are not going to get hurt. It's just, it's going to be the first-year transition, it's going to be a lot of work on our part. So I'll find out further why it wouldn't be a full seven days.
Okay. That's, and, yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want, I was not, I just wanted to say for the record that I was not speeding it up. I run the clock for the council, so I, during Council Jones's time, I had accidentally, when he wasn't talking, when he was talking, I was writing something down, and then I didn't stop his talk, so I wanted to fix it and correct it for the accuracy.
Thank you.
So that was nothing to do with telling you to finish up, just wanted to make that clear. Go back.
Councilor Borlan.
I just have a question that I thought of. When I go to, like, Cape Cod, there's a place where you can kind of do shellfish as recreation, you can buy a day or week pass or whatever. And most people don't pack all that stuff, especially those rusty rakes, and, you know, you don't, you don't pack your rusty rakes and things. Do you guys, they offered an option, it might be way too much for us, but they did offer an option that you could, for additional fee, actually, you could rent gear.
That would be a wonderful idea, but you have to understand, we have two wardens.
Yeah.
And they work every day of the week. We work every day, even through the winter. And so having, we don't have a spot to do that. Like, for instance, Christmas Day, there's a warden out there. So.
Yeah. Just something I brought to mind when we go to Cape Cod.
But you know what, if anyone wanted to, we could, we could always, we do that, like when we have educational groups, we have all the equipment, and we provide it to them for those days. And we have talked about having several days a year, or come on down with a family and harvest some clams, and we can show you how to do it. Because we have enough in the river, and I don't know if you've ever noticed, but there's several miles of coastline, people are out there in their kayaks and paddleboards, and we had to stop the diving, because we had people diving right in the, in the river, which everyone said, why not? We used to do it as kids, but their boats are up and down there. And, you know, they could be underwater, and here comes a boat doing 20 miles an hour over their head. So we've had to take into consideration what to do.
Well, just thought I'd ask.
Thank you, it's a good idea, though.
Probably too big for our area, but, too much, but they did have that availability for people flying in that are here for a week or something, and they wanted to go out, and, you know, they're camping, and they wanted to, you know, get some shellfish, you know, for the week.
And you know what's also happening, not to throw, but now that, like, the State Park at Bluff Point, out-of-state people also have to pay to park there now. And so there's kiosks, so it becomes very expensive for them. So in the summer, if you don't pay at the kiosk, and you have an out-of-state plant, plate, chances are you're going to get a $50 parking violation. So, you know, we don't really have that place to, to attract people from out of town, because on top of the fee for the license, they have to pay for parking for the day.
Well, thank you for everything.
Thanks.
So I have a question. There has been suggestions on the weekly pass, and potentially going Monday to Sunday, or just the full seven days. And my question is, if we pass this, and then it goes to the town council, and we pass it there, it's going to be what's written in here?
Correct.
And if you need to change it again, then you have to come back to us just to change that day pass. Would you, would you make any suggestions tonight?
I would suggest that we leave it as it is written, and there, and is because there has been so much information between the recreational and the commercial side, I have forgotten the rationale behind it. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that answer, but I know that it had to do with just the way the tickets are issued and how they're reconciled. And I believe that was the reason for it. We're not trying to cheat anyone, it's just the way it sets up for the, the way that it works.
No, I just didn't want you to have to come back just to make a simple change, if you would.
I think I'd like to keep it as where it stands.
All right, I can respect that. Mr. Burt?
The next, the council's not to January 7th, so there's a lot of time, so if you do something the next couple of weeks and thought you wanted to change it, it's a simple enough change, it could be made that night.
So if you do go back, and, and you do decide as a body of, you know, your group, and you decide to make any type of, you think it's a good idea to change it, or you just want to leave it? That's fine, but if you want anything to be updated, let us know before our next meeting.
We do, we had another suggestion from someone in the audience tonight, and it was a very good suggestion, and we're going to make sure that's incorporated, and that will be put on the pass for your review for the approval.
Okay. Now, the design of the pass, we're not actually approving the design of the pass tonight, that's.
I don't think, that was what we're asking for, it's just the reg.
That's on you to decide what you want.
Yeah, the regulation change. And we wanted, there's one other area in here that we thought was very important, it's based on sustainability. During COVID, we were, sometimes 75, 80 clamers were there on a Friday, and it was, we were really worried about if our suppliers are going to be taken to the point of no return. So we, we added some language, and if we felt that we were being overharvested, that we could limit the amount of clams to one peck a week. And that could be done at our level, and not having to go through several months, because we monitored them. You know, when we go around and see somebody say, how are you doing today, they show us, we read down a peck. So at the end of the day, we've gone through 50 packs, that's about 5,000, 6,000 clams. And so, we pretty have a pretty good idea what's going out of there on a daily basis, and we try to do the math, so. That was one of the areas that we, we asked for that leniency, so if we feel like we're in trouble, we can make the change without having to get permission.
Well, thank you for everything, I think you've really thought through things, and
Thanks.
And I'm happy that you've come forward and asked for these changes. So seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2024-1074 Recreational Shellfish Management Plan Update. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero, to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more, we'll have another vote on it, so.
Pardon?
On January 7th, we will have another vote on it.
Very good. And what happens at that point, does that, does that constitute a, we can move forward on that vote, after that vote?
I believe it does, that's, I mean, that doesn't, this doesn't have to go to the RTM, so, yes, that will be it. January 7th, the final vote at the town council. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good night.
Ms. Scott?
All right, up next is 2024-1018 RTM appropriation. This is on page 71 in our packet. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. 2024-1018 RTM reapportionment. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the new representative town meeting membership reapportionment effective for the town of Groton, November 4th, 2025 municipal election. Second?
Moved by McBride, seconded by Jones. And we have the town clerk here this evening, would you like to come up to the microphone? Good evening, would you like to introduce yourselves to everybody at home?
Marissa Melendez, town clerk.
Good evening. Would you like to sort of give us a synopsis of what's going on?
I guess I was informed that every four years after presidential election, I'm supposed to present to you guys the reapportionment of the RTM within 60 days, so here I am. But the new numbers, and actually, they're not new numbers, they're the same numbers that were approved last time.
Okay. Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm clerk, it was always good to see you. I know we had spoken off-record about some of these things, as I had questions, but we're going to, I'm going to do that for the public. We had discussed, I had looked at District 4 and District 5. The number of electors was almost twice as much in District 4 than it was in District 5. They are the same legislative district, so it wouldn't really affect who the members are voting for in a state legislative election. The reason I'm bringing this up is I have concern about wait times on election days at District 4. So that is something that I am cognizant of, I want, and I would kind of like a little bit more even if possible, and then, you know, it could, same could be said for District 1, 6, and 7, but those are relatively closer, not as extreme as Districts 4 and 5. And we had talked about how District 2 and 3, that was the city, so that would be kind of, it'd be a little bit more difficult to do them. Or not necessarily need, because they are very close in numbers. So, actually, and District 2, and District, District 2 is the 41st House District, District 3 is the 40th House District, so it actually has to stay. I guess my question is, like, how, what is the process of changing it? And, you know, is this, I understand that you have to come after 60 days, so I just kind of want to know what's the process of changes before we go on to final approval?
Right, so like I had said off the record, it's like, I'm not even sure. So I would have to go right after here, and tomorrow start searching, finding out how would I do this, and then I would have to come back to you guys and present you the new numbers, or at least the process of how it has to be done. Because my understanding is that it was done in 2020, and then in 22, I believe it was redone because the sensor triggered the redistricting. So I'll have to find out how to go about it to do it again.
Yeah, and also, it just, it kind of make it, I know we have a lot of vacancies on the RTM in District 4, because that number is so high.
Right, right now, currently, we have two vacancies.
And kind of maybe shifting populations in neighborhoods can come together a little bit, so it's just a thought, and, you know, that's kind of where I'm at.
Do you have any other hands? Counselor Gajewski?
Can I make a motion to postpone this until? Counselor Jones, I know you have a calendar in your desk. Thank you, I want to make a motion to postpone this. To, before I make the motion, how long do you think it might take?
I, I'm not sure, because it'll be my first time doing it.
First, do you have a deadline that you have to submit this?
The only deadline I read was that I had to present it to the town council within 60 days of the election. I didn't see any other deadlines. But I guess, because we're going to the election in November, we would have to have figure out, figure it out as soon as possible. But the only, the only deadline I read in the charter was 60 days after the presidential election.
So I'm going to make a motion to postpone this discussion until the January 14th cow meeting, like, is about a month.
What date?
January 14th cow meeting.
I'll second.
Point of information.
Your question?
Is that still within the 60 days?
Yeah, I guess, no, it's going to be yes.
But, wait, point of information.
I have a point of information, if.
Eight, yeah, 60. January 3rd, 60th day from the election.
I'd like to remove my second, please.
I have to remove my.
All right. I'm not sure if it's present to the council in 60 days, or if it is.
Okay, so.
All right, in the charter, it does say, within 60 days after each presidential election, and within 60 days after redistricting of the town, as determined by the registrar of voters and approved by the council, the total number of electors of the town and each district shall be certified by the town clerk.
Point of information.
We're not going to be within 60 days at all, even to approve it at town council.
Point of information.
Am I correct?
Correct, that is right. Even today, we won't, won't get us inside the window.
So I make a motion to suspend the rules so we can adopt it tonight?
That would be after we pass this.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules after we pass this, to move it tonight.
I think we should wait till we get this part done, and then you can bring that forward.
Perfect, I will.
All right, so here it was, is what I'm going to say. I also had concerns about District 4 as well. I think it's grown very large, and that maybe it has to, we might have to make some changes and move some to different districts, or even split the district in half and create two more districts, if that's possible. But, as this is your first time doing it, and this is probably not easy stuff for you, you know, it's not stuff we all just know off the back of our hand, I would like to make a suggestion that maybe if it's not possible for us to change districts tonight, that would, from what I understand from some people, especially in District 4, because of the layout, there were people that had to wait outside, and to be able to go inside. And if, it may be all over polling places, and I know you're not the registrar of voters, and maybe it's up to her, but maybe what our suggestion should be is, if they can make, make it so that people can go inside into a turnstile-like line, so that they're not waiting outside, and maybe have some certain districts have more people present to get people in and out a little bit more quickly. That would be my suggestion, but I understand we are now, we have to be within the time constraints of the 60-day window. So, I think I'll bring that up to the registrar, though, but that might be, you know, the backup plan until we can maybe, you can relook, it can be relooked at again.
I will contact our.
And I thought it also said in here, if I'm mistaken, I thought it was the registrar of voters, the town, redistricting of the town as determined by the registrar of voters and approved by the council. So. Okay. Counselor Parker.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, which is what I was going to bring up, because I'm looking at it. My question for you, actually, and the town manager, Mr. Burt, is if we're going to suspend the rules, we are at a cow, and we have to provide notice that we're doing this, because it's not an emergency meeting to do a town council meeting. Am I correct?
Okay, Mr. Burt, look for that while we take care of this one topic, and then, right after this topic is finished, we'll figure out if we can suspend the rules or not, and how we'll deal with it, because it might even have to be a special meeting.
And, Madam Mayor, that's where I was going with it, because we can't do that tonight, because we're at a cow.
Right, but we could just deal with what's on the agenda for the cow at this moment, until we pass it, and then we'll go on to the next, while he's looking. Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I do. Go on. Sorry. I, I want to ask through you Counselor Gajewski's concerns about the issues about the numbers. I believe the last time we did this is because the state redistrict us, not the registrar of voters, because of the census that came out. So, does that mean the registrar of voters still has to go up to the state to ask them if it's okay to do that, and splitting the districts? Because when they split, changed the districts, they also moved our state reps around.
Correct, and I actually spoke to Representative Bunker this evening about it, and the states did do it for the state legislators, though, within the state legislative districts, those can be moved around and changed for the RTM, which is local.
Another question. If we split, are we going to find a new location, where the registrar of voters have to find a new location that we have to approve? Because there's a lot of steps that are involved, and I want to make sure we have all our questions out now, if we're going to do this.
I agree with you. I would believe if there was a district to be divided into two, it would take another location. If more was moved over to District 5, from 4 to 5, it would, would not take another district. But I absolutely respect what you're saying, and that's why I'm saying, if it's not possible to do it this evening, that maybe we pass what we have, because it is what, as you stated, what we had last time. So, I mean, but, maybe we could talk to the registrar about just the length of lines, and maybe more people at one, the location that has a higher turnout.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I yield.
Mr. Burt, I believe, has taken a phone call. I think he's checking on the issue at the moment. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is kind of like where I'm, this is where my, my interpretation of the charter, and I could totally 100% be wrong, was that the clerk had, the town clerk had to come to the council within 60 days, we didn't have to.
What section are you on?
I'm on Section 4.222- reapportionment. It said, "The number shall be determined by the town clerk and shall be within 60 days after, and within 60 days after redistricting of the town, as determined by the registrar of voters and approved by the council, the total number of electors." So, it's kind of.
I don't think you've been here through this before, so.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
What happens is, there is going to be another meeting, and don't usually, it comes up with the percentages and all this other stuff, that we usually appoint them. We are doing Section 4.2.2.
Yeah.
And in Section A, that is the part where it is taken out within 60 days after each presidential election, and within 60 days after redistricting of a town, as determined by the registrar of voters and approved by the council, the total number of electors in the town and each district shall be certified by the town clerk. You need to certify it within 60 days. The registrar is actually supposed to be coming to us, and saying, this is how I've laid out the districts. You certify it after 60 days, within 60 days. And that's also where you come to us, because if she changed any boundaries, that's where the, we would have how many reps, and you would do the, the whole calculation and the division of divide by 45, and all of those other things. That's how I can recollect this.
Okay, I appreciate that information, and I'm going to have a follow-up question for you as the mayor. Because what is the process for changing reapport, for reapportionment, if we did change voting districts? What is the process for that as a council?
You mean, the, the lines from District, from, just, for example, 4 to 5, if we moved a line over?
Yeah.
And then, which would change the population within the districts? That would then change the number of representatives. That would then change the number of representatives per district.
And my question is, can we do that? Is there a certain timeframe that we do that? Is there, are like there restrictions, like once it's set and it's good to go? Is it, like do you want to?
I do know what you're saying and I think, as was stated, ever about, after the election, you would come back within those 60-day window to certify any type of changes. And the registrar of voters would, if they wanted to change anything, would do so and then the town clerk would have to certify it within the 60-day window is from what I'm seeing.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes. All right, Mr. Burt, would you?
I was hoping to get ahold of one of the attorneys. There's no clear opinion, but I don't believe you can without posting it. I would suggest, you know, we could always do just a Zoom quick Zoom meeting to.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
I agree, I think that's probably the cleanest and probably the best where people will not have an issue with that. That's my personal opinion. So let's just, this evening, at least try and get through the COW portion of this and we'll figure it out from there. Counsel, are you all set, Counselor Gajewski?
Yeah.
And to clarify, to make sure that I am correct, Mr. Burt, we read out of the charter of how this has to happen and that it says in the charter at 4.2.2, Section A, within 60 days after each presidential election and within 60 days after redistricting of the town as determined by the registrar of voters and approved by the council, the total number of electors at the town and each district shall be certified by the town clerk. So usually redistricting is done by the registrar of voters, not the town clerk. She certifies, the town clerk then certifies, is that correct?
Did you work in conjunction with registrars?
To get the numbers, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
As long as they helped calculate, that's fine.
All right. So, and it was also asked by Counsel Parker if she could ask yourself if she'd like, but I, to summarize, it was basically if, if we change the district lines and the population changes, no, that wasn't the question, I'm so sorry.
I don't remember.
It was something else she asked, I'm so sorry, I'm just totally blanking now.
Nope.
Okay.
I asked the question and that's it.
All right.
Oh, may I?
You may, please do because he wasn't here to hear the question.
I believe it's the determination by the registrar of voters about switching it around, that they would be, they would be doing it, this not us and the state, because I asked about whether it was within the state, but with the, 4 and 5 is under one state representative. So if we split it, is that going to change anything anywhere else? It all depends on how the registrar of voters switches everything around.
Right.
Right?
From what I understood, it was set by the state, the districts for the, to legislators in our community, but we are allowed to change at least within those boundaries, districts for the RTM, is that correct?
I believe so, but any of this, I don't love how this is written right here. I'd want to run it by the attorneys.
Great.
It's not real clear.
Counselor Bordelon.
Yeah, thank you. So I did some reading on this before coming and it would seem to me that there needs to be, and I think when we're doing our calendar of, of like, we're looking at everything in a year out and we're like proving dates, we should just somewhere on someone's calendar we need to put that this comes up because every year it has to be certified and it seems like it should be a collaborative meeting with the registrars as well as the town clerk. It also would seem to me that the council then at that point, we should have a meeting prior to them looking at it and we should be driving if we think there needs to be a movement. So that should have probably happened, in my opinion, you know, for me, what I was reading, it could have happened on like an agenda item prior to this, two agenda items prior to this, where the council brought up for discussion and said, here's the certified numbers that are not approved yet, but this is what, you know, it's going to be coming to us and does anyone have any questions or ideas? And then the council, my understanding, if I could be wrong, then the council would present to the register to say like, we'd like to move District 4 and then that way we'd meet the time restraint and then the clerk could certify it. So for me, obviously, I feel like we're racing at the final push here. I think we move with what we have. I think that in moving forward though, we need to come out with a map out, a better plan of action so that way we are inviting these folks in earlier and the council's looking at this earlier to determine with the register, you know, do we want to make a movement so that way we have the time to do such. In the meantime, I think for District 4, I think adding in extra polling stations within the building and increasing the manpower so, and maybe the looping idea as a, as a way of band-aiding it for now to make sure people can get through adequately would be my recommendation, but I think we do moving forward, I feel like we're just kind of, we're pressed for time and, and when you start moving those lines, I know the other one was driven by the state, I was affected by that one, for example. I was in District 3 and then moved to District 2 and it did change my state rep, not a big deal, I had two great options, so not worried about that. But the, it was a lot of education to tell that one loop of like 400 residents in my neighborhood block to like now we move from the former West Side Middle School, I mean from the, I'm sorry, from the City Hall building to the former West Side building. So it's a lot and now we're moving into another election season. So I just think, there is a way, the election's been done since November, look at these numbers earlier, let's get this on the agenda, on the agenda as a council earlier, even before, you know, the clerk certifies them, that way we can have some direction to give them. Right now, trying to coordinate the register and all this within the time, I don't see how we're going to do it. I mean, I do agree though, I think District 4 should be looked at and should it be split? I don't know because I think we need to do the research and have that discussion, but I welcome that chance and I think we should look at a way of putting this on the calendar in a more effective manner.
Just looking further, I'm not so sure you can split at this point, redistricting versus reapportionment. So I wouldn't do anything tonight to try to change anything. I'm not, I don't think you're going to be able to.
No.
I think it's just about the numbers of seats.
All right, Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just reviewing what it says here on 4.2.4.2.2 is after every presidential, so it's every four years we would have to make a note of it, but it can be on the calendar for the following week after, well, they still probably have to do some stuff with the election, if I'm thinking correctly. So it would be, it would be at our end of, we might not be here, at the end of November. Hey, things change. That four years from now, we don't know where we'll be and it may not be us. So, for, so every four years, yes, I can hear where Counsel Bordelon is going, but we don't have to worry about it every year, only if the state decides to step in and the registrar of voters has figured out that we have to redistrict. So, I'm okay with voting with the numbers because we voted on these two years ago in '22 if I'm remembering correctly because of the changes from the state.
Yes.
And the numbers are, have stayed the same.
They have.
Okay. Right now, then we're just going to keep it as is, that's my thought right now.
I was just looking at '22 also, it's an ordinance, it was an ordinance adoption for the redistricting, for changing boundaries.
Which came from the state, correct? We had to do it because of the state.
That's the process if you change it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, Counsel Bordelon.
Thank you. I guess what I'm trying to say and I, and I think I agree with Counsel, Counsel Parker stated, is that we knew the numbers were this under the last election, but we can only change it during the presidential. So we, we have to wait the four years. So now we know this and we knew that last year, we just need to mark it somewhere for whoever's going to be up here and let it be the town clerk or the town manager, whoever's going to be the standing by that returns, that there was a concern for District 4 and it's noted. And then moving forward, like even on non-presidential years, we have that number sitting there and if there's a concern, it can be an agenda item of discussion knowing that in a year the presidential election's coming. That's what I meant by about being more proactive in the sense that, you know, we have to kind of, and it is hard, it is hard to keep track of all these little items. So, for me, I will put that in my stack of things to remember and hopefully I will, but in, you know, you know, now I would think that we don't want to wait till the, till the presidential election year, we want to make sure if it's, if it's, that you can only do it every four, then we, we want to earmark it somewhere like we are looking at this and making sure it's on the agenda to discuss if there's a concern. But, again, as I stated, I think anything we can do and that would be a discussion, so my recommendation, I'm not making a motion, but to the mayor is maybe getting the registered voter in here sometime soon to talk about our concerns with the lines and the waiting and talk about ways that we feel as a council that should be relieved for the election, like extra voter booths, extra people, staffing and wraparound ways to get that in. So that's just my thought, but again, I don't think there's much we can do tonight, unfortunately, we've, that, that truck has driven by, we're past the point of no return, so.
Thanks. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. So, we are going to vote on 2024-1018, RTM reapportionment as is in our packet with no changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That's eight to zero to zero, passes. Thank you very much. And Mr. Burt, we were probably going to have to figure out how to have that.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Special meeting.
Looking, I think redistricting is after census, not after the presidential election. Everything I've seen is tied into the census, so it'll be a while.
For RTM?
Yeah, for any district changes.
All right, so, thank you, have a good night.
I will double check that though.
All right, up next is 2024-1077, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance, set a public hearing. This is on Page 72. Counselor Jones, you want to take that one?
2024-1077, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance, set public hearing. Motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing for February 4th, 2025 for the retaining of excess tax payments ordinance, so moved.
Second. Moved by Jones, second by Bordelon.
And I, and I do have Director Morrison on Zoom.
Does she want to give us a synopsis of what the state is allowing?
Sure, good evening. Dee Morrison, Director of Finance, can you all hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Great, perfect. So, this topic has been discussed for some time in the Finance Department and since coming on as Director of Finance, I'm able to see firsthand the amount of work that is required to process any of our refunds, including the small dollar amounts. So, per the Connecticut State statutes, or general statutes, we are able to put into place an ordinance to authorize the tax collector to retain any payments less than $5 overpayments. So, this is the first step in the process is to bring it to you. So I do have some information from the tax collector in case there's any questions as far as the number of checks that we've been processing or dollar values, so are there any specific questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have some specifics. Will this $5 amount be consolidated over multiple accounts that a person may have? Or is it per account?
Meaning if an individual has an overpayment on one account?
Yes.
Well, can it be applied to another account?
Are you asking if it's like two different vehicles?
Not necessarily two, let's say a tax payment for your, your home or your boat and another tax payment for your car.
And you have a balance of $5 on each one, or $10 on each one?
Or if you have a balance of, you know, a dollar on each one and then the last one, you know, brings it up to $5.01. I mean, do they accumulate or is it per?
Well, I think in those cases, the tax collector might reach out to individuals depending on, you know, maybe not to this magnitude, but if there are overpayments, they might reach out to the taxpayer to let them know and, and they can't just take the overpayments and apply them other places without discussions with the taxpayers. Usually what happens in these cases is that there'll be a bill for say $147.26 and the person just sends in a rounded check for $150. And so this, this minimal overpayment just stays on their account and because we don't have this ordinance in place, we have to, we're required to refund it back to them within a certain timeframe.
Okay, within that certain timeframe, if that same customer were to, or resident were to send another check in for a rounded up amount and that became, now the, the amount of money is over $5, would, would you consolidate those? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That is a good question. If it's crossing over brand list years you mean or for either motor vehicle or real estate, that is a good question. Let me find out from the tax collector on that one.
Okay. My next question is, we stuck on $5, can it be $4, can it be $6 or is it $5?
It's per statute, it's exactly $5.
Exactly $5.
It would need to be, anything less than $5 could be per state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Refunded or retained.
Now, as far as, before the three years is up, because I saw that in here, three years for some folks and six years for veterans, before that time is up, is there a place that residents can look on, on the website to see if, if they are owed anything and then maybe come in, in person and get their $1.75?
We cannot just give an individual cash over the counter. We are not allowed to do that. We would have to process them a payment via a check.
And once you have this ordinance which is restricted in the law, what you can do, it would take away that possibility. It's one way or the other.
So would they be able to get a check if they walked into the town hall for that $1.75?
If you adopt the ordinance, no. That wouldn't be an option.
Wouldn't be an option, okay. Guess that's it, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Finance Director Morrison. So how many checks are we talking about here on a yearly basis?
It varies, but right now, over the last couple of fiscal years, it was a total of about 155 checks in total written, but the dollar value of that was less than $200 for 155 checks.
And how many people a year are doing this?
How many people have their hands in the pot?
Yeah, or how many, how many people are writing excess checks?
Oh, how many people are writing excess checks? Okay, well, I mean, I can't say for, I can tell you that we have unprocessed about 115 checks or accounts, but that's spanning over multiple brand list years, so, you know, it really, it depends on the individual, mostly it's motor vehicle. I would say, and because we have such a large military presence, sometimes people just come in, they pay a rounded amount or they send in a rounded amount check and then they're just not available to contact to, to even issue a refund at this point even without the ordinance because they've moved out of state or something. So, so I don't have an exact amount of, or number of people, but I can just tell you over the last, you know, 12 years, right now I've got 115 accounts that have minimal overpayments.
Has, has anybody come back looking for their $1.75 overpayment?
Uh, no, not typically, we don't, we don't have a lot of. We don't, um, we don't have a lot of individuals pounding the town door to get their $1.75 back. Actually, we're on the opposite end. When these refunds are issued, we find that a lot of times people don't cash the checks. And then, um, we send letters to the addresses on file to request, you know, do you need a new check? Have you lost it? If we get no response after a certain amount of time, then these checks end up being issued to the state.
Or it just sits on our books and we just have open checks sitting on our books that we can't seem to close, so.
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, I guess what I'm getting at is people write, do overpayments, but no one actually seems to care about it. So by, by sort of doing this where you can just sort of void out that's up to $5, it isn't really gonna affect anybody. I mean, nobody's gonna come after you looking for money, so they're not even gonna know they did it, so.
Correct. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of people that will be upset by it. And in for, in total, the under, the unprocessed accounts, uh, total about $104.
So it's just a lot of busy work for the town, chasing people around for money they don't care about.
Yes. From the tax staff, putting together the backup to enter into our system, to push through to the accounts payable, for her to verify everything, and then it goes through all of our approval processes, and then she's physically printing the checks, mailing the checks with the cost of postage, and then sometimes with military, if they, we don't have a good address, the checks are being returned. So it's a lot of administrative work for these.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Portelon.
Um, thank you. No, I can appreciate this and the work that goes into it. What do we do with the excess funds? They just, where do they just stay in that particular account, or where do they go?
They'd be part of the general fund. They'd be in fund balance.
Okay, I guess I have a question through the mayor to the town manager. If there were these excessive funds, and I know it's only 140 bucks, would it make sense that could we, would it have to be a different agenda item? I would make sense, since it's not money that we are really owed, that we give it back in good faith, maybe to our food pantry and human services or something. Would make sense to me, like, if in a year there's $140, to me, like, whatever that excess number is that's calculated, we pay it forward, you know, since it's other people's really money. I think give it back to people in need. How would we have to do that?
I'd wanna know if, how much work that, would that be much work? I mean, the council would set a policy. Dee would, you know, you would know by the, at the end of the fiscal year how much you received. Is that correct? Extra?
Uh, meaning how much?
You wouldn't do it as each one came in.
How many, how much in total refunds we had in process?
I would just say that at the end of the year, whatever the total number of, of overages money, that amount.
Yep. Um, I mean, yes, well, no, but I'm not sure how beneficial that may be on an annual basis. For example, for Grand List 22, so fiscal 24, there was only two accounts, and the refunds that have not been processed yet that were under $5 was only $3.45. So in total, from going back to Grand List 10, all the way through Grand List 23, which is our current fiscal year, that's where the $104 are, but it's, I, I see what you're saying about paying it forward, but it might not be a lot of money.
Okay, I, I respect that. I mean, I just, my thought is this, if it's money that someone overpaid, I think, I don't, I mean, to me, $3 is $3, $5 is $5. I think we should see it, to me, it sits better as a community thing that it's going into some other account like that. That's just my thought. It's just my, you know, like, versus like, sitting in the general fund, you know, if there's 140 bucks, if there's five bucks and it buys two bottles of, two jars of peanut butter and it helps somebody out, I just think that that money was not money we were anticipating. It's an overage, someone else already paid for it, and if we're keeping it, pay it forward. And, and that's just my thought. But if that has to be a policy, that's another thing, but it's just my thought. I, you know, and maybe, and maybe this year it's different, maybe in the next year it could be another $100. We don't know. I don't know. And how many, I guess my question is, how many have you successfully refunded?
I only asked the tax collector for information back to fiscal 22, but that was the total of 155 checks, um, with a dollar amount of just under $200.
So how much in that amount did you successfully collect, uh, return?
About $200. I mean, we, we wrote checks for them. I'd have to check with our accounting division to see if they've all been cashed.
Right. So my other thought is that, you know, when we look at the numbers, it could be more because now we're changing the policy where anything would not go back. So in fact, any of those funds that we're not seeing based on those numbers because they were actually refunded, our number could be higher. Because this policy then would automatically, we'd retain it. So that's where I think in good faith, it would, you know, it might be 50 bucks. If it's 50 bucks, 50 bucks, you know, send it forward. It's pretty simple math and a simple check to cut or move the money to the account to the human services or, you know, whatever. That, that's all I'm saying.
And that will be a separate referral that wouldn't be able to be part of this.
Sure. I, I'll, I'll put it in a referral if you'd like.
Can I have anything on rules?
So I'll, I'll send that one, 'cause I just finished that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Morrison, is this only for the people you can't get a hold of? This is not if somebody is a current resident and they make an overpayment, 'cause it would be applied to their next year's account?
Well, if this ordinance were to be set, it would be for any taxpayer that has an excess payment of less than $5.
All right. So currently, what my question is, someone overpays you. Okay, say I have a $219 car payment, a car tax. I give you $220. That dollar would go to you guys and not go to my next year's taxes. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Point of information.
Your question?
I thought this was a three-year thing. It wouldn't fall off for three years. So if we have an active account.
Your question's been asked. So.
Okay.
It's her turn, so.
So piggybacking off of Counselor Pacino's, it's up to three years, right? Or is that just?
The refund timeline is up to three years. If, if there's a payment made by, an overpayment made by the taxpayer, and we have a requirement to refund them within the three-year mark.
So they can't keep the money on the books for the next year? So you have to?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So the other question is, under pursuant to the section of 12-129, the excess payment, does it say where you can keep the payments? Because everything we should be doing should be according to Connecticut general statutes, correct? It doesn't?
Correct.
Doesn't say that we can transfer the money to somewhere else?
Correct.
With ordinance, you do retain it, and then you can do what you want with it as a council. But without this ordinance, you, you try within that three years to find the person and pay it, and then it goes away, but you can apply it to another account three years.
But my, but my question is, if the person is currently living here and they have an overpayment, that means you'll take the dollar from them instead of applying it to their next year's thing? So with this new ordinance?
I don't think we apply it even now to the next, do we apply it now to?
That's what, that's my question.
No, I don't think that.
Yeah, I don't think you can apply to.
Tax office applies it to automatically to the next year's bill, because honestly, there's not always guaranteed to be a next year's bill. Especially when a lot of these are motor vehicle related.
All right.
So, so to be clear for myself, so if you, right now, if you can find the person, you pay it within that three years. It doesn't go anywhere else. It's, here's your refund. If you don't find them, then it goes to the state. We remit it to the state. This would allow us to keep it. We wouldn't touch, do anything with anything under $5. We would retain it. We wouldn't be reaching out. It's all across the board. We hold the $5.
Okay. It's our time. So it's only for people you cannot find? That was my question overall.
Currently, but not with this, it's everybody.
I, I think I'd rather.
Which is about that $200 mark over three years.
Okay, so the question is, out of the three years or the 155 checks, how many still live in Groton?
Hmm, I am not sure. Of how, of the checks that we've processed over the last couple of fiscal years, how many are still living in Groton?
Yes, thank you.
I will have to get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna jump in and take my first turn. So I understand where Counselor Parker is going in this, 'cause I had the same question myself, was, let's just say somebody has a $4 credit on their account. It doesn't stay there. You're saying that the town just puts it into their general fund? They sweep it out, right? Like, that's it?
Under the new ordinance?
Yes.
Correct.
No, I'm just talking new ordinance. So, and that's what the state is saying, that you don't just leave it on the, the taxpayer's account?
Right.
And then after three years, you can sweep it into the, um?
No.
Into the general fund?
It just says plain and simple, you don't have to touch.
So what if I'm, what if I'm still paying taxes, like, the next year, and I, I don't have a credit on my account?
No. Right now.
So the thing is, you don't have to get in touch.
Right now, we have to give it back to you if we can. We don't apply it to other accounts. And you would have to then get that dollar, and then you have it to do with what you want.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So now, anything under the $5. I understand the part of the, like, this ordinance where you don't try and contact anybody.
Right.
That saves the time, the manpower, the energy, the stamps, envelopes.
Right.
Printing, ink, all of it. Saves a lot of money. But the issue is, I'm surprised it doesn't just stay on the, the taxpayer's account, and then if they pay taxes the next year, it just could help offset. Like, if they stop into the office and, like, they wanna pay, and they're like, hey, you have a credit on your account of $4, do you wanna apply that? And then, after three years of maybe no, no activity, then sweep it to the general fund. I can understand that, but I just don't understand why you would sweep it right away with, 'cause it's under $5.
Well, it's one or the other. Yeah, you can't alter it. If it's the new ordinance, this is the only way the law allows. So the other way, you have three years. So you're saying, can we keep it currently as it is, but start asking people if they want, add another step of asking people if they wanna apply it somewhere else?
All right, so.
You won't attempt to.
The state is not allowing us to leave it on an account for a taxpayer to use in a, in the next year. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Right.
And you're absolutely sure on that one?
Well, I'm reading the law, that's what, I could double check, but that's what it appears.
Okay. I think it's, in the big scheme of things, let's just say you had 155 checks and they're $5 apiece. Let's just say $5 rounding it. Out of 155 checks, and like she said, there's been that many over fi, um, three years, it's $775. I mean, in the big scheme of things, it's not a huge amount of money for the town and considering their budgets, but I just would hate to have people where they have $4 and they have seven items that they pay taxes on, and it's like $20, $30 a year just being thrown away because, without it being applied to the next year's taxes. But in the big grand scheme of things, she said it's less than $200 for 155 checks, and that was over a three-year period. And I'm sure it probably costs more to mail them out and trying to find the people then, and the energy and manpower used. So I will, I will go forward with this. I just didn't understand it. It didn't, I wasn't really clear on that part. I would like it better if they just left it on the account for the taxpayer who may be still active in the community to use against a future tax bill, and then after three years of inactivity, clear it, but I guess that's not to be had. Okay, that's it for me. Counselor Pacino.
You hit all the marks.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna take a vote. Counselor Portelon.
So my, my reason for wanting or possibly bringing forward the rule to move it is because if it can't stay and we're not gonna keep it the way it is, I do agree that the money, the way it's set up currently, it would make sense that, like, I have free cars and taxes, it would make sense to keep my credit there and apply it, so I can agree with that. But if that can't be done, I just don't, I just think that money should just sit in the general fund. I think it then should move to a reputable spot, which automatically doesn't matter, because, like stated, what if there happens to be a time where there's more money? It just makes sense to me. But if there can't be a combination and you can't hold it, then I, that's where I was thinking, it, it should sweep over and we should keep a track of that and move it over into maybe human services or something like that. But anyway, I just, I, I guess my concern is, does the state law say all or nothing?
In terms of the $5 thing?
Right. Like, if I go on tonight, and, 'cause I'm, it's gonna bother my head, and it says on there, yes, you can do up to $5,000 and/or keep the money on the account, and you have the right, after a year, you can set the year maybe. Is there, are we sure there's no other modifications?
Well, the earlier part of the law says, you know, currently we have three years. There's some other provisions, court cases, others, but generally speaking, you have three years to refund it. Now, and then at the very end, the new addition to the law was, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the legislative body of a municipality may, by ordinance, authorize the tax collector to retain payments in excess of the amount due, provided the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. And we've seen quite a lot of other towns adopt it, it's always $5.
All right. Okay. Do you have any more? All right. So I guess we'll take a vote on 2024-1077, retaining of excess tax payments ordinance, set public hearing. And this is set for February 4th. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining. I need more information.
It passes seven to zero to one. All right, up next, 2024-10, oh, you wasted, before I even start anything else, I have it written right here. It's after 10 o'clock. Can we, um, all in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye. All those who want to adjourn.
Point of information? Can I? Oh, shoot. Sorry.
All those who would like to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye, like to adjourn.
Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, 'cause I've got a question. Same second.
Huh? You're abstaining as well? Two abstentions? All right, so I guess, uh, that fails for continuing.
It was the vote. Motion to adjourn.
It was a motion to continue the meeting, and it failed.
It failed. There was three. It was clear. So, motion to adjourn.
Roll, roll call? I don't, I don't have that.
No, but. Motion to adjourn. It was.
Is anybody changing their vote then?
I will change my vote. I'm gonna ask a question.
What are you changing your vote to?
Yes.
I had a motion to adjourn on the floor.
You need a second.
Point of information.
Your question.
Do either of the last two topics need to be discussed tonight in light of the fact that we do not have another committee of the whole in December?
There, there's no pressing need.
We're in the middle of a vote.
I know, I know, so.
All right, up next, 2024-1075, health fund balance reserves policy. This is on page 72. Oh, no. Yes. I'm sorry, hold on. I have the wrong page number written down. This is on page 74. Counselor Russ, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the health fund balance reserve policy.
Second. Moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. Mr. Burt, you wanna give us the?
Sure. Sure. If you may recall, the last couple of months, we had MDG come give an update on healthcare. And Lynn Gerben, that presented, had mentioned that some towns have adopted, uh, policies as to how much of a quarter to have in the healthcare fund. She sent me a couple examples, sent me, you know, she sent me a couple, some examples. I was asked to put something out there for consideration, um, by the mayor. And so I took what Lynn provided. The only thing I left off of it was, there's also, uh, an amount for the run out, the runoff for if you were gonna close, move to another type of, like, self-funded, you would have some extra money there. I, I personally, personally don't think that would be needed. If we were gonna move over, we could always either, one, add money that year from the budget, or just take out federal fund if we came to that. I don't think we would need it, though. So we set this as a preliminary talking point of a 15% um, fund balance. And just so you know where that, what kind of money that means, if you looked at the end of 24, FY24, we had 261,000 in the town portion of the health fund. If we were to do 15, if we were gonna have a requirement of 15% at that moment in time, we would have needed, uh, 822,000 and a little change. So about 560,000 more in there than we did. Of course, things could swing quite a bit from year to year, too. You could have more back one year, less back. It changes every year. I don't have a strong opinion on this, either way, for this policy. It's kind of up to the council if they think, you know, we have enough other reserve balances. I'm not too worried about it. We've been very consistent in, in not going over budget, so wherever the council desires.
Yes, and the, um, the auditors had said something about having a policy, and they would recommend us having some type of policy in place. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager. So is this 15% reserve split between the town and the Board of Ed?
We do not control the Board of Ed part. It would just be the town's portion. And the amount I gave you for numbers was just for the town, yes.
Does the Board of Ed have a, an equal or valid reserve balance?
We're just discussing the town side.
Just the town side. And that's 15% out of what? What is it, 15%?
Well, whatever your budgeted amount is that.
That we have budgeted for.
Yeah, so it changes year to year. For instance, we, of course, don't know what we'll have left at the end of this current fiscal year, but I can tell you that based on the budgeted amount, we would need 906,000, almost 907,000. And I also think if you did something, you should probably phase it in over a few years, you know, not try to, you know, do the whole thing.
Is there a reason you were, let's just go to the numbers. You had the 2024, the 261. Is there a reason you were comfortable with that number and didn't bring it more, or is that just kind of past practice?
You know, that was around the 5% mark, the 261. It just happened to be where we, where we were at. Not planned or anything like that.
And you were comfortable with that number at that time?
As long as we have other reserves. Now, what you could, what could happen in the future is, let's say you don't put extra money into this and general fund gets eaten up, then, then, you know, if you lose that resource, that, that'd be the argument why you would put some in here.
So you sort of.
I think it's made to a budget here, so I'm not saying I think we should put like 600,000 immediately in, but maybe over three years, try to get that up.
And would you, is this a number you're gonna, you would readjust every year, so sometimes it's, it's, I mean, if our health budget was, you know, 8 million, then 10 million, it's gonna, it's gonna fluctuate around.
Yeah.
And then, um, is there anything we do with that money, or is it just sits there in a, in a reserve account and it just, it's the backup in case something happens?
It's the backup in case something happens.
Okay.
And then if we, the way this policy reads is, let's say we went over 15%, we had some great years or whatever else, you know, we had less cost than we thought, and it could jump that way, regardless of putting money in. And then, um, at my request, uh, the town council could use it to either, one, um, stabilize premium cost increases, you know, use it to, uh, offset, you know, costs going into the budget, or, um, meet other unanticipated self-insurance needs. So it's there.
Keep, keep it in the insurance.
Basically, as long as it's over 15%, the goal, so basically it's a goal of 15%. We'd have some flexibility with it if you went over. Of course, council could override the, the policy at any point anyways.
And is it, did MDG make this recommendation, or did the state? Who, who made the recommendation of 15%?
No, they, they kind of, they didn't really give a real recommendation. Remember, if you recall, they gave, you know, here'd be extremely conservative at the 25%. You know, I think they did 30 was the most conservative. They said, you know, there was 25, 20 was still considered conservative. Um, we, with our history, we didn't think that was really necessary to that level after discussions internally. We thought 15% would be more than adequate.
So you've just determined, just from our past practices and how you've managed the count, that that seemed like a fair number, so. Okay, all right, thank you.
Council McBride.
Thank you. I, um, I think it's a good idea to have a, um, healthcare fund balance policy as I recommended. However, I also think, um, I think we're pretty conservative. I think we have a very healthy fund balance when you consider all the excess additional fund balances beyond the general fund balance. So I guess what I'd like to do is, uh, provide some thoughts that I think to attain 15% would be reasonable, but I think we could do it over a period of time. Let's say 5% a year to get to 15%, so we don't have a big, that big nut of $500,000, you know, coming into budget season. So I think that's, uh, would be doable, and I think it would give the council enough flexibility in the future years to change that if needed. So I'd like to make a motion to establish the Health Fund Balance Policy Reserve to, um, I guess to attain 15% over a three-year period, 5% this year, 5% in '26, and 5% in '27.
Second. So your amended motion. So the, the motion's already on there to.
Yes.
Create the policy, but you're amending it to fund it? Fund 5%?
Yeah, 5% each year.
Over three years?
Over three years, to attain the 15% in three years.
To achieve 15%.
Point of information.
In. I'm waiting for a second first. Second. I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry. All right, so I have it amended by McBride. Seconded by Gajaski. Your question, Council Burt.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Wouldn't it start in '26? It'd be '26, '27, and '28, not '25?
We're in the, we're in the '25 budget right now.
Right.
How are we going to name it?
Budget process to start it.
Yeah, that's true. You already have 5% in there, right?
Right.
So for '26, we wouldn't have to do anything. I guess that's important.
For '25, we wouldn't have to. We would for '26. And remember, and this is a goal again. If you got it in the budget time, this is a goal, not a requirement. The council, if we had, something happens from the federal government, you could always choose not to put in that year.
So do I amend that motion, or is that Council Parker?
Well, how about, well, what you had was amended, so it's, um, 5% over three years to achieve the 15% within three years, beginning in 2025. So what you're saying is, there's already 5% in there probably, right? So we just maintain. So you're starting right now?
No, Madam Mayor, no. I'm saying we're in budget year '25, so we can't add that right now. We can't do a 5% right now.
July 1st is when we'd have more money to put into it, unless you allocate something special right now.
And we're not allocating right now. We don't have that.
From the fund balance.
So in this scenario, if you start at '26, you wouldn't have to do anything at '26, because you, you already have the 261.
It, we would discuss it, like, in the upcoming, it'll be in the upcoming budget. Do you want to amend?
Yeah, I'll amend that, Council.
I should clarify. I, I just did the math. It's 3.17%, right? For '24, it's not 5%. So 3.17.
What are you saying?
For the end of '24, it was actually 3.17%. Looking at the 261,000 that we have is, um, is, uh, 3% of the, hold on a second here. Hold on, no, never mind. Hold on a second here.
Getting like.
No, I'm getting confused. I'm getting tired.
So the amended motion is fund 5% over the next three years to achieve the 15% in three years, beginning in, we're gonna say 2026. FYE. FYE 2026. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay. Council Board of Lines.
So my question is, um, it locks this money in and we can be able to touch it?
It's a goal. It doesn't lock, well, it, it's a goal of it, but once it's in there, if it's less than 15%, you would have to vote overrule basically the policy to take any out. You can choose not to put anything in during the budget process, because it's a goal. You can just say, well, we can't fund it this year.
So that motion that's on the floor is not a hard fast. If something else happened, we could choose not to fund it in that particular year?
Yeah, it's just a goal.
It's a goal. And then, is there anything saying that we need to, why 15% and not 10? Is my question.
There's no set rule on it. It's what the council thinks is appropriate. Internally speaking, though, the HR Director, the Finance Director and I spoke, we thought this was a good starting place.
Do we need to start that high? You know what I mean? Like, could, would there be any opposition from that side if we said, okay, let's do 10% and then make that, you know, we already have the three something, and then just split the remaining over the next, like, the same, same fallout? And then if we happen to do better, make it a more attainable goal, is what I'm trying to say. That way, we don't have a year where we say, we're not gonna put the 5% in, or whatever the percentage, it works out to be.
I'm just entirely up to the council. Being a goal, though, you already have the flexibility to set it off it.
I don't know, I just think 15 might be kind of high to start at. I'm kind of more, I think 10 is a better goal, and if we overachieve that goal and hit 15, because the funds are good, it's great. I, for me, I think I'd like to put things in place that I know are achievable, and, you know, if we end up not funding it one year, it's like, well, they didn't stick to their plan. I don't know. So I just thought, I'm just thinking 10% is a number that I had written down on my form today, that I thought was a fair number to achieve. But if we hit 15, it's better to say we made a goal and we hit it. Oh, wait, we exceeded it, and we hit 15. So in the back of our minds, we could try to. We don't know who's, you know, you know, when we look at these different years, we don't know where anything's gonna stand. Other people could be making decisions, so I, I just don't wanna lock up anything either. So that's just my thought, is, was the 10, but I'll wait till my second turn to decide if I wanna put a motion if there's not the will. But I think for me, 10% is an achievable goal, with no backslides, and no, no not funding, and then if we can fund 15%, we could. And that looks, that's just my thought. That's all. I'll take my next turn.
Council Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor. Every bit of this percentage, whatever it turns out to be, is gonna be attainable. All we gotta do is vote on it, right? So it's the whole pen issue all over again. It doesn't matter where it is. Okay, just, I just wanted to get that. It doesn't matter. We can get it if we need it. Thank you.
Council Russ.
I appreciate Council Board of Lines, um, 10%. And I feel like we kind of hold money quite a bit. But I just, just experiencing the Board of Ed budget this last year, I understand the importance of holding reserve. And while I appreciate your 10%, I feel like if we don't put it at 15%, we're never gonna get to 15%. We're gonna say, oh, we could go more, but we're never gonna go there. So I, I, I'm comfortable with the 15%. My question is actually a policy question in that, do we need to put the motion to be 5% per year over 15, up to 15% for three years? Or is, or should that just be in the body of this on page 75?
I would prefer to have flexibility, because what is 15% today? I won't know where we end up in a year until September, October. So going to the budget year, you know, I'm guessing, you know, we won't have any idea. So what's 5% taken, you know, at the end of the year, September, 2%? You know, and so even if you put 5% in, does that mean you're putting 5% in, for sure? You're putting 5% in, but it might turn out to not be 5%.
So.
I would rather recommend money in the budget each year, trying to, you know, and you choose how much, if you agree or not, or what you wanna change it to.
So you would prefer it be written like page 75, or sort of totaling more than 75% over years, or you would prefer the 5% each? I, I'm just confused on where you're standing on this.
I'd rather have flexibility and recommend to you each year, because you could put in what seems to be 5% that year, but by the time the numbers are known, month, several months later, it might have turned out not to be 5%. So to get to that 5%, it might take a couple of years. You just don't know. It's very fluid.
So setting a goal for 15%, it's a goal, but it, it doesn't need to be funded a specific amount each year?
And I think the main thing is, I'm not recommending we up and turn over 560,000 to suddenly be at 15%. Just see where the budget is and try to work it in like we do everything else in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burt, through you to Mr. Burt. So we can set a goal up to 15% because we won't know if we're gonna be able to achieve 15% per year?
Well, you know, we can get to at one point in time where we think 15% is, but every year's gonna be a higher, we know healthcare goes up every year, so it's gonna keep slipping. So if we need to keep putting money in, it's gonna keep dropping down percent-wise.
My question would be, should we set the goal for reserves up to 15% per year? Because the 15% is per year, correct?
Well, at any one time that you would maintain 15%, which is adjustable each year. That no matter what your budget is, that you keep 15%. So if you have a $10 million, you know, thing, you just wanna make sure that just in case the cost overruns, things come out. You know, it's all, how much risk do you wanna take? That's all it is.
So to Council McBride's point, if we start off a little bit of time, because we're saying we want 15% now. So if we say we want 5% one year, 5% the next year, in four to five years, we can get to 15% as a set goal. Right now, we don't have a goal of what we're doing for the next year's budget. And I'd rather not start off right away of being at 15%.
Oh, no, I don't think we should be there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going right to that. The, again, you could say, okay, right now, where our cost is X, it was where we're gonna put 5% of that in. But by the time I know the numbers several months later, by the time we get no actual numbers, that might not have been 5%. It might have been just a couple. But I still don't want to be that locked in. But no, it should be spread out over time. But just, I wouldn't say dictate it upfront.
But the verbiage says, the council sets a goal for reserves of 15% of budgeted expenditures. But we don't know if we're gonna have 15% of the budgeted expenditures. We don't know what that's gonna be.
Right, it's just a goal. You could stay at 5% forever. It's just a goal. We're not gonna, I'm not gonna put in the budget 15% to suddenly jump to 15. I, I guess I, it's no different than other things we fund, like, like, trying to get our general fund for balance up. It's very similar. We did a goal for a while to get to there. You do what you can to get to that point. It's pretty much exactly the same thing.
Can I ask a question of Council McBride?
What's your question?
Is, I, I want to confirm that his goal, the, his motion was to build up to the 15%?
The motion is a goal, a goal to fund 5% over each year for like three years, to achieve 15% in three years. That's the goal. Beginning in 2026. FYE.
So my question would be, why can't we set the goal of 5% and then 4% by year four? Just thinking out loud, year four to have the 15%, because I'd rather start off slow and hit that 15% by the fourth year. Even if we have to hit it by the fifth year, at least this way, we're putting something towards it. That's why I said, set a goal of up to 15%, because when we set the goal for our general fund, we went by quarters, if not quarters, three quarters. We did it increment, incrementally. So I like the idea of doing it incrementally, so, um, So, because 15% of the budget expenditures, like you said, we're not going to know until September, October, once the books are cleared.
Right. But if you set it at five percent the first year, and then we have a bad year, for instance, it does come over, I'd have to put 10% maybe the next year and rather than five percent. I just don't want that locked in. I advise hopefully you get saying five percent.
Can you say up to five percent? Up to. Is that going to, can you, I, I just, the, my key word is up to. So we may not have five percent, but we could get up to five percent.
I mean, yeah. Though I might come in and see a terrible budget and just tell you, I recommend zero this year. You know, I just don't think you should lock it too much. It's a goal.
It's a goal.
We have to look at the whole picture.
The key word, goal.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm going to take a turn real quick. When was, when is the best time that we're going to review this fund? And if we have excess or, like, as you said, like, it's very fluid. But when is the right time? Because I know with the fund balance, we do it after the audit is done, and that's when we're supposed to look at it. And right before we set, you know, and what we're going to use, do we set taxes?
Probably late fall. See where real numbers are.
So to be a different time.
And then we'd know at that point in time where we were, you know, from the previous year, it would only go through June 30th. I would know, you know, September, October, right, what happened through June 30th. So we would know at that point in time where we were at. Of course, you know, but we'll already be in a, it's, it's going to be very fluid, it's, you know.
Right, well, it says 15% of budgeted expenditures. And that's why I'm wondering, like, should we do it at the same time we do the fund balance? Just to say, stay consistent and have things to review at the same time. Because then the thing is, my thing is, as Counsel Parker said, she's good with, like, not wanting to be locked in and taking it even longer. My thing is, you come back and you're like, this is what we have in the fund balance. Thing, we are eating things away. This is what's going on with the budget. If it's a tough year right then and there, you can say what your recommendation is, and we as a Council can vote on it. And it's during the budget while we're dealing with the money.
Right.
So my thought is, we do at the same time we do the fund balance, and we do it every year at the same time. Because then we know what our finances are and whether we should be putting money in, holding off. What is your thoughts on that? Or even the financial directors? Like, is that a good time to review then?
I mean, you can review at any point. So going into the budget for this next year, we know this current year is 906,000 is the 15%. So you'll do a third of that for five percent. But we would take, what we would have to do is take whatever number we get, and we get that rough number February-ish for healthcare. We would take that number and say five percent of that number, so maybe a million. So five percent of, you know, of that, so you might, so you'd have to look at that, you know.
But like I said, if it was a really tough year, and it wasn't the right type of time of year that we wouldn't put in, we would say, maybe this is the year we don't. Or we only put in two percent this year. Because my thing is, this is a goal.
Right.
Just like the Council prior to when I started had a goal of us to get to.
The only thing is, I have to plug this number in before that point as I'm doing my budget. So I'm going to be plugging something in earlier, and then you guys can adjust.
Right. I just think it's a good time. We only have the whole budget.
It's not like, it's not like you use a fund balance where you choose at the end. This, I need to do this upfront-ish, you know. I need to, I have to plug, I can't leave it zero, so I have to plug something in.
Right, and that's my thought is, when we're doing the budget, we'll have a big picture of what's going on in our financials, instead of dealing with it in the fall.
At least the big part, right.
Yeah, in the fall, then it's harder to figure out, well, where do we truly stand at that point in time compared to our budget. I'm in favor of it because it can be changed and anytime, and the money could be taken out at any time we choose. But I would rather have a policy, as was suggested, and because it's not, like, we're, it's being checked by the creditors, we can change it. It doesn't always have to stay at 15. It could be moved, it could be changed. We could use it for a while, figure out if it needs, and see how it works out. And then you could also advise on what you're seeing in it.
Right. Because I can tell you, you know, if we're approaching needing a million in there, we only have two, I can only go by the latest confirmed number. So whatever my latest, if this 261,000 was my latest confirmed number, and I, and the 15% of the current budget's a million, I'm probably not going to, in my budget, put that whole amount in, that much, because I know this is going to be a tough year. So I'm, so I'm probably, of course, a million's 15% though, I suppose.
Right, but whatever number you put in.
Yeah, if you're five percent, then yeah.
As a Council, we can adjust, right? Or if something changes by the time it gets to us, you can say, things have changed, and make it your recommendations to us. But as was said, what happened to the school budget last year, and reserves are important.
Yeah. And early on, it might look great in the years you're getting those in, but suddenly it worsened, or that part of it was the opposite last year, where it was looking really bad and then suddenly lessened.
Right. Especially if they put in tariffs. Okay. Counselor Jones, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So through the mayor, to the town manager. So we're not sweeping money out of this account ever. It just sits there cumulative. So let's just say this year, you had it at $600,000, and the next year, the money was going to be 960, you're only putting in $360,000. It's not like you're putting in a million dollars, you're just putting in the portion to get it up to.
And let's say you somehow had fantastic couple of years, you got 40%. And you could say, okay, rather than tax, you know, the taxpayer for a little bit of the cost for healthcare, you could say, okay, we're going to put this towards it rather than tax dollars.
So it can, it can fluctuate back and forth. Okay. So, so in reality, if we did what the motion on the floor is, was the five, 10, and 15, that's sort of pushing your hand a little bit more. But if you're, the way that you're talking about doing it, at the moment, it's 3%. Next year, you might do 4% and then 5%. You might just, you could do really any number that we've determined.
And I don't think the Council knows how much stuff, it's really hard to budget and have to zero, make a lot of choices on zeroing. I don't want to be locked in. I might just say, no more this year, from my opinion.
Right.
And that's part of, part of the charter is that the town manager has to be able to do that. Policy can't override that. I'm going to have to put it when I think it should be.
And so the way this is written as a, as the motion, the motion, not the one on the floor, but the original motion, there's no timeframe on this. It's just, it's just a goal. You could, you could take 10 years, you could take 15 years to get to this, or you could do it in two. So that gives you the most flexibility, is the one that's the original. Is that correct?
Yeah. I guarantee I'm not coming in and saying, let's do 15% or even 10%. I don't want to go above the five.
I think I'll put the original on the floor. It seems to give you the most flexibility. And you're just going to kind of work your way there anyway, so.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. For me, I just think that it's, I think it's great to have goals, and if we had nothing before, I think starting somewhere. So for me, I just think, you know, I like obtainable goals with a vision in mind, right? If my vision is 15%, that's one thing. But I think, like, not knowing, I like to have a tangible goal. And so for me, this thought or agenda item could be every year, we could have it on there and talk about our goals. So why predict way out? Like, for me, like, if someone says, hey, you made a goal and you hit it and you exceeded it, that's just how I see things. So I, in my, in our, my mind, we hit 15%, but that's a great goal. But if we only hit 10, we're still way better off than we were before. And so I just don't, I don't know, I just don't like to get ahead of ourselves a little bit. We have no idea what the state's going to be doing. There's a change in whole federal government and everything else. And I do agree that we need to be fiscally responsible and have that savings. But if we never had a goal, and we only have, how much percent do we have in there currently?
Around three to four percent.
Right. So it hasn't been a priority at all, and I'm not saying that's not a bad thing, but why now? Why today? Why predict out? Why put ourselves in a position where we have to, I don't know, feel the pressure of a, of a, of a goal that we as a Council are, you know, trying to achieve? So for me, I'll probably just abstain from this because I just feel like, I like to vote on things that are attainable. I'm all for saving, but for me, I think, if you said to me, you know what, the next year, 2026, let's try to shoot for a 5% goal or a 3% with the, with the vision in mind that we hit 15 eventually, I'm okay with that. I feel like that's achievable. But if we hit 5%, that's great. So for me, I, I just think we should go year by year, honestly, with the vision, the long-term goal of 15, but let's set it year by year. And that, to me, is much more attainable. It's a simple motion to do. It's not hard. It's not like we're rewriting an ordinance to do it. It's just, I'm your suggestion. So I'll probably abstain from it for that reason. And that's it. Thank you.
Of course, if we ever went to like a self, a fully funded plan, this would all be moved and be gone.
Right. Yep. Counselor Guyaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like Counsel McBride's idea for the goals to be phased in over time.
Can I just, as I think about it more, that's not allowed per Charter. You can't restrict, you guys could set your own goal, but you can't at all restrict what I put in there, what I recommend. Yeah, I just want to make that clear, that the policy won't apply to me.
And that's what I was.
That's what I was saying earlier. You would make your recommendation, but we always can change whatever to what we want.
Yep.
We can raise it or lower it.
Yeah, and that's, that was my, second point of my time is, you know, it's a goal and the manager technically, based on the Charter, can do whatever he sees fit. And then during budget, he could say, this is why I did it, here's, and then we make our decision from there. So I'm perfectly fine with the way it is, and you'll bet.
Thank you. Sorry, need to stretch. All right, seeing no more hands. We're going to take a vote on this one. The amended motion will be voted on first. The amended motion is to have a goal to fund five percent over, each year over three years to achieve 15% in three years, beginning in 2026, FYE.
Point of information.
Your question.
Didn't we, didn't we change it to up to five percent?
The goal is to achieve 15% for three years. That's, that's the goal.
But you read five percent per year.
Five percent per year over three years to achieve 15% goal in three years.
I thought it was up to five percent for three years.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention?
Aye.
Why's that noise?
Sweeping?
Squirrels in there.
Passes five to two to one. Five to two to one with, all right, that passes. Moving on.
Uh-uh.
Oh, the amended motion with the main motion. Taking a vote. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino has raised his hand and said aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll say.
That passes seven to zero to one. Onto item 2024-878-5, street takeover ordinance.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino. That's on page 76. Would you like to take that one?
Item 2024-878, street takeover ordinance. A motion to recommend a resolution to adopt the ordinance to enact penalties for participating in street takeovers.
Aye. A second. Sorry.
My Pacino seconded by Russ.
I'd like to note, it's almost 11 o'clock at night. Sorry.
All right, then. All right, I'm just going to let you know, we had a public hearing. I believe there was nobody signed up to speak when we had that.
And no major change is going to be made at this point without going back to all the hearing.
All right, so, Counsel Parker, did you have your hand up?
I did. I had a question.
Counsel Parker, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Burt. When does the ordinance become effective?